Casey. You ready?
I'm here, ready to go.
Hey Casey, we're going straight into regular, no workshop.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Alrighty.
Michael, you ready?
Yeah.
Yo.
Good evening. Thank you very much. Welcome to the City of Lamarck City Council. This is our, this is a special meeting that was scheduled due to Hurricane Nicholas on our regular scheduled meeting date. And there is a public hearing with this as well. September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of Lamarck, Texas will conduct a regular meeting or a special meeting in a public hearing on September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, beginning at six P M. in council chambers at eleven zero nine B Bayou Road, Lamarck, Texas, as well as via video conference hosted through Zoom in accordance with section five-five-one dot one-two-seven, the Texas Local Government Code, a quorum of the Lamarck City Council. And the mayor intend to be and will be physically present at eleven zero-nine B Bayou Road, Lamarck, Texas. This location will be open to the public and the meeting will be broadcast at this location and via YouTube. The council will meet for the purpose of considering the following agenda, the meeting has been called to order. Kiera, would you give us a roll call, please?
Councilmember District A.
Present.
Councilmember District C.
Present.
Councilmember District C.
Present.
Councilmember District D.
Present.
And Mayor.
Present, thank you, Kiera. And now we'll have our invocation and pleasure of allegiance. It is our pleasure certainly to welcome Pastor Joseph E. Franklin of the Neighborhood Missionary Baptist Church to lead us in our invocation, followed by our pledge. Michael Carlson, would you lead us in our pledge? Pastor Franklin.
Would you bow your heads with me and let your eyelids come together? Heavenly Father, we pray this evening for our fair city of Lamarck. We pray, our Father, because we need you. Your word says, asking shall be given, you seek, ye shall find; knocking, and it shall be opened. Our Father, we need you to bless this city. Bless this recently elected young mayor, Keith Bell. We need you, Lord, to bless these elected officers. Bless our Father, every department of this city, every employee, every appointee, every leader who serves this city. Help them to continue serving these latter months and to disregard the powers of darkness that is trying to invade their positions, even their responsibilities, their accountability, and their integrity. We pray, Father, our heads to protection for the families. For our young mayor elect, pray for the families of all these elected officials. We pray, Father, for all those who are involved in our city transactions. We pray, our Father, that you send your gentle breeze of the Holy Spirit and let them know you are lamp to their feet and a light to their pathway. Our Father, we pray that it be your will that you let them know that your word says that that if God be for you, who can be against you? Then, Lord, I pray you remind them, recognize the fact that we are our brother's keeper. And we know, Lord, that there's an old proverb that reminds us, he who runs fast. Amen. But bless to those who run together. Run alone, you might be fast, but running together, you could be a winner. Let them be together, Lord, in these meetings. We ask your choice, bless us upon our head, this bow now in the sound of my voice. All that's going out on YouTube, we pray, Heavenly Father, that they would be led to support and pray for these sincere and necessary meetings at this council chamber. We thank you in Jesus' name, God the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen.
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Pastor Franklin, certainly. Thank you, Mr. Carlson, and welcome again to Democracy at Work. Certainly, council, let's move forward with doing the business of the people. We are now at item four, citizens' participation, limited to three minutes per person. Comments from the public will be heard at this time. Any person with city-related business who has signed up may speak to council on a specific agenda item, limited to three minutes. You should give the mayor your name and item you wish to speak about. Compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city may not deliberate on comments. Personal attacks will not be allowed, and personnel matters should be addressed to the city manager during normal business hours. If you're joining us by phone, you may press star six to mute and unmute yourself if you wish to speak. If participating by Zoom, whether it be smartphone, tablet, or computer, the lower portion of your screen should have a microphone icon that you may press to mute and unmute yourself. And again, if you're wishing to speak, let yourself be heard so that I can recognize you. And when you speak, please give your name and your address. Kyle, are there any persons on Zoom or teleconference that wish to speak? She is G L O. She's G L O. Very good. Tonight, we have Mr. Rashad Loftus. Mr. Loftus, would you, when you get to the podium, state your name and your address for the record, please?
Good afternoon, Rashad Loftus, living on Johnson Street. And I'm here once again to voice my displeasure with the code enforcement department. So for far too long, I've watched our community become a hazardous place, what's about city, a home to low-income and minority communities. We have streets in those areas that have become dumping sites. It is common to see trash, rodents, and other animals that roam these streets. Much of this is because people are being allowed to contribute to this and create an environment that poses environmental hazards, which in turn impacts the health of those neighborhoods. This message has been taken all the way to City Hall. Turns out, nothing has been done, but something can be done. However, what has happened in this city that our codes are not being enforced? There are rules on the books. However, it is well documented that selective enforcement has been happening, largely due to who is leading the city's code enforcement department. Lack of leadership. We have had that at City Hall also in the past. These environmental burdens will continue if we don't demand change in the leadership. And I demand that change today. Let's spark some action. I want this community and you members of council, city manager, and everybody here involved to take part in this community and try and uplift it, your part, stop bringing this community down. Talking about our city leadership that most of you think. So with that being said, let's say it once again. That needs to be changed. Y'all need to hear that. And you need to act on it. Because I'm tired of coming down here talking about the same infractions, people getting away with it, no fines at all. I'm gonna be coming back at the next council meeting with a report on what I've been finding out from other cities, how much money they're generating through fines, because that's where you hit people at, when they out of line, you hit them in their pocket. And they might get in line, but if they keep getting warnings after warnings and certified letters after certified letters, nothing's gonna change, and this community gonna still be the same. And we're gonna still be talking about it. Y'all ought to be tired of hearing it already, y'all just got here. Mayor Bell, you've been here seventeen years, and you, how many times have I come up here about the same thing? It's sickening.
Yes, sir.
And it's the same people. It's the same people in charge. And I'm tired of it. And I've said before, and if I gotta keep coming up here, beating you head across the head with it, that's exactly what I'm gonna do.
Yes, sir. Mr. Loftus, point of affirmation, I believe there's an agenda item tonight that will address some of the issues with code and the, and the request tracker.
Exactly.
So stay tuned. Yes, sir, thank you. Former councilmember Robert Midstich. Welcome back, sir. We're glad that you're feeling better. Yes, sir.
Robert Midstich, twenty-four North Curlew, Lamarck. Want to address council about our proposed tax rate. And I do plan to be at the Friday meeting, but I thought it would be appropriate to address y'all now with what I'm going to be proposing. I am proposing to council that y'all consider for your tax adoption, a rate of fifty-two to fifty-three cents instead of fifty-five. If you consider that the state of Texas, for everybody to understand, the only property tax relief is with the local, city, and municipal governments. The state will not and has no plans to put any caps on any appraisal district. It is set with the local governments. When we look at our current tax rate today, if we reduce next year's tax by just a couple pennies or three, a tax rate of fifty-three cents will yield with no new development, none whatsoever, and a current average tax rate of ten percent, which we've been experiencing, and this will continue with the growth that we're seeing with Texas, this will yield just under six percent growth for next year. And that's with nothing else coming on the books. It will fund everything that you want to do this year and next year and beyond. And what we can do next year is look at reducing another penny, and the following year, and another penny. This is how we attract business, this is how we provide tax relief to the citizens. It is the only way, and I implore you to please give us a break. The average homestead, average homestead increase in this camp, in this, in Lamarck, was just over ten percent. Our revenues grew, our revenues grew just at twenty-point-seven-eight percent. Now, nowhere have any of us ever received even a ten percent raise, and many are on fixed incomes. But we need to start reducing these taxes. And I implore you, this was one of the things when we raised it, we said we were going to do it in the future, the time is now. And I will present more, and the numbers, I've got them, they don't lie. Thank you, council, for your time.
Thank you, councilmember. Uh, yeah, well, let, let me, are there any other persons in this audience that wish to speak? Are there any other persons in this audience that wish to speak to the tax rate? You are more than welcome. Gone once. Gone twice. Three times. Thank you all for your consideration. Gus, would you, would you help us to understand the public hearing on the tax rate, please?
Sure. So the original public hearing for this matter, the City of Lamarck chooses to have three of them. The final one was originally scheduled for last Monday. Last Monday at ten A M., Mayor Bell declared a state of, state of emergency disaster because of the pending Hurricane Nicholas. The decision was made to protect the citizens of Lamarck, to not encourage them to travel to City Hall at six P M. for a special council meeting, given the pending hurricane. Then, once the, in order to give, to give the citizens of Lamarck ample offer, ample notice of the hearing, of the public hearing on the tax rate, it was re-noticed for the following, for this Friday, once the hurricane had left the area. So that is why on September twenty-fourth, we are, the city, the city council will conduct a public hearing and consider a final vote on the proposed tax rate at that time.
Thank you, Gus. Just, just, just for knowledge of the public, how many, how many public hearings do we have, and how many does the state mandate that we have?
And the City of Lamarck had, had, was going to have three, it will not have four. They're required to have one.
So we had, we're gonna have four, and the state only requires us to have one?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Now, Kiera, the workshop agenda had proclamations. The regular meeting does not have proclamations. And we have some folks in the audience that have come to receive a proclamation. So I think that, do we have the proclamations ready? Can you go grab them? Okay, let me, I'm gonna read the proclamations, and then, and then we'll, we'll give them to, to the persons when they, when you, when you return. If you are here for Constitution Week, raise your hand. I knew it, I knew it. If you are here for National Day of Service and Remembrance, I believe, Ms. Madeline, you already have your proclamation, correct? Hispanic Heritage Month, we have persons here? Okay, all right, let me, let's, let's start with Constitution Week. Again, I'll read, and then when we get the proclamations, and we'll, we'll give them to you.
Office of the Mayor of the City of Lamarck Proclamation, whereas September seventeenth, twenty twenty-one marks the two-hundred-and-thirty-fourth anniversary of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitution Convention, and whereas in nineteen fifty-five, daughters of the American Revolution petition files, sets out September seventeenth, twenty-third annually, dedicated Soviet service to Constitution. The resolution was later adopted by the US Congress, defined as law on August second, nineteen sixty-six, by the White House. And whereas, by way of background, D A R, daughters of the American Revolution, is a nonprofit on political women's service organization dedicated to preserving the memory and spirit of the men and women who achieved American independence. And whereas, the D A R has also erected a structure that is built and triggered to the Constitution of the United States, D A R Constitution Hall, which is a performing arts center which opened in nineteen twenty-nine. And whereas, independence guaranteed to American citizens, whether by birth or naturalization, should be celebrated by appropriate ceremonies and activities from Constitution Week, September seventeenth through twenty-third, and designated by proclamation of the President of the United States of America, in accordance with public law nine fifteen. And I therefore, either mayor, city council, by virtue of the authority vested by the City of Lamarck, Texas, hereby proclaim September seventeenth through September twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, as Constitution Week. The City of Lamarck, and you all, and you urge all citizens, businesses, and professional bodies to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American, all rights and responsibilities. Which that privilege involves, sign Pete Bell, Mayor. Congratulations. We're gonna sit tight, we're gonna have, we're gonna have your proclamations soon rather than later. This past Saturday, whether or not, only Saturday before, Saturday before, we celebrated the anniversary of September the eleventh. And with that, we had a cleanup that was citywide, it was organized by Galsen County Next. We thank Galsen County Next for choosing our city to assist in cleanup. Certainly, in that cleanup, we had members of church organizations, we had volunteers from our city staff, and every member of council came out to work with this group to help keep our city clean. During that, that event, a proclamation was given to Ms. Madeline, Mr. Sedgley, as well as a member of the People of Beautiful Commission, believe it's Loftus, came out to represent the people of Beautiful Commission as well. And this proclamation, and the proclamation raised a song for the family month. Whereas twenty years ago, on September eleventh, two thousand and one, the American people were thwarted, attacked, assaulted, assaulted, and murdered. This anniversary is fitting, a tribute to the strength and resilience of the American people through service to our nation and our community, and whereas the community members have the opportunity to honor this fallen and commemorate the continued resilience of the American people to forever encourage all who keep America's promise to never forgive by, by means of organizing remembrance ceremonies that will honor those that continue to serve our community, including active duty and served soldiers and veterans, veterans, first responders, and whereas the events of September eleventh, two thousand and one, says that the strength is with all of our country. And they also reminded us of the values set out by our forefathers, who saw a vision for the United States, that we should live and be free of tyrannical rule, and whereas we continue to offer support to the families and friends who lost loved ones in the devastating events of this day. We commend our firefighters, police, and first responders who courageously risked their lives of risk to those in need. Whereas, the City of Lamarck and its great citizens join with our fellow Americans, Americans across the nation, honoring and remembering those who lost their lives in those risked terrorist attacks in our battlefield. We, the mayor, the city council, by virtue of the authority vested by the City of Lamarck, Texas, to give our proclaims, September eleventh, twenty twenty-one, as National Day of Service and Remembrance Day. In the City of Lamarck, upon the people of Lamarck, to honor the lives of those fought by participating in community service and remembrance ceremonies on this day and throughout the year. Pete Bell, Mayor. Congratulations. We're being, I'm really proud to cry.
Yeah, it was, it was a lot. Yeah, it was, it was a lot, but, you know, it was, it was perfect. We just thank y'all so much, especially all the citizens, we wish those by the way, all of you there. I know that as we were out, and even afterwards, I actually had to say, commented and say that they, they saw the mayor. So, yeah, so we hope to, you know, this was our first event, and we hope that this is gonna be an end of that, as you know, this is national event that is called for us to dedicate to the day of service.
We were honored to work, yes, yes? Still something? All right. Hispanic Heritage Month, if you're here for Hispanic Heritage Month. Office of the Mayor of the City of Lamarck Proclamation, whereas the observance, observation of Hispanic Heritage Week began in nineteen sixty-eight under President Lyndon Johnson, and was expanded to the Hispanic Heritage Month in nineteen eighty-eight under President Ronald Reagan. Whereas Hispanics have enhanced and shaped our national character with central traditions that respect the multi, multi-ethnic, multi-ethnic customs of their communities while serving as civil rights leaders, politicians, military service members, educators, first responders, science pioneers, public servants. And there are several very prosperous Hispanic businesses, leaders, and teachers within our home community. Whereas Hispanic Americans have worked to overcome fifty challenges, often in the face of information and prejudice, and have successfully embraced the opportunities of the American dream, whereas this year's, hey, Hispanics, Whereas this year's thing, Hispanics, be proud of your past, embrace your future, invite Hispanics to embrace their background, and be proud of who they are and where they came from. Whereas, the day of September fifteenth is significant because it is the anniversary of the independence for Latin American countries, Puerto Rico, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. In addition, Mexico and Chile celebrate their Independence Days on September sixteenth and September eighteenth, respectively. Also Columbus Day are Dia de la Rosa, Dia de la Rosa, which is October fourth, all from this thirty-day period. And now therefore, either mayor and city council by virtue of their authority vested by the City of Lamar, Texas, to hereby proclaim September fifteenth through October fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one, as Hispanic Heritage Month. The City of Lamar, and you urge all citizens, businesses, and all professional bodies to during this time, carry on activities, programs, and celebrate the ways Hispanics contribute to our nation and society. Bill, Mayor, congratulations. So.
And I'm there, I can't hear.
You bring gifts? While you're doing that, I'm gonna sign these proclamations so that we can give the Daughters of the American Revolution theirs, Hispanic Heritage members there.
Thank you. While, while you're doing that, before the Daughters of the American Revolution leave, I'd like to say, many years ago, dare I say, maybe even near the time of the Declaration of Independence, I mean, but you used to sponsor contests, thank you, Madeline. You used to sponsor contests that were held at the Old Elks Club on Lake Road. And I want to say that I was honored one year to, to be a winner of that oratory contest and received a scholarship that certainly was important for me to continue my way to college. So thank you, Daughters of the American Revolution.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Compton. Mayor Bell, our Regent Sean Carlson would like to make a couple of statements, would that be okay?
Absolutely, yes ma'am.
I just wanted to say that I'm, I'm the Regent of the George Washington Chapter of the D A R, and we've been celebrating Constitution Week since nineteen fifty-five. The purpose is to educate the public about the Constitution, its principles and its values. And I just would like to thank everyone who's here tonight, helping us to commemorate this event.
Let's do the, y'all have anybody to take pictures with me?
No, I'll take four, you and I'll get to you.
Okay, let's do, you want to do, let's do National Day of Service.
The control more.
There you go. And then let's do Hispanic Heritage Month while we have you here. And if you need more copies, let me know. We can have Kara make some, assign. Okay, let's do, let's do this, let's do the Constitution, and then I'll have to come back. Oh, thank y'all, thank y'all for being patient, and thank y'all for helping us to offer this. Good luck to you. Ms. Mandy?
Mayor, Lamarck City Council, thank you for this wonderful honor and recognition. I brought some gifts there to get you started with Hispanic Heritage Month celebration. In there, all of you have different cookbooks, and they are from, you know, different chefs. And in the Hispanic culture, you know, food is part of our, many of our celebrations, whether it's weddings, quinceañeras, birthday parties, it is what is so beautiful about the Hispanic culture and that brings us together. And so, happy cooking.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Madeline.
Well, since Joe said something about Constitution Week, the Constitution Ladies with the Daughters of the American Revolution, I am a history teacher. I love Constitution Week. So when I heard you guys walk in and say that, I wanted to go, yeah, yes. So thank you so much for Lamarck Middle School. I was there from two thousand and four to two thousand and five. So I am a T C I S D former employee, just recently retired. Thank you so much for loving our country and promoting our Constitution.
We have a, we have a display at Lamarck Middle, we have a display at all the schools in Lamarck. And we just brought the Lamarck Middle School, their display day, and Ms. Gooding in there is helping us.
Oh, good.
Yeah, and I absolutely love Lamarck School, very supportive of the Constitution and what we're doing to educate all the schools and students there.
Thank you.
Thank you for the book.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mandy, too, for the, for the cookbook, thank you.
Before I forget, I forgot to, got busy with just talking. I wanted to recognize Mr. Marcelino Compean. Mr. Compean is, as many of you know, council member, Mayor Protemp, actually, Joe Compean, this is his uncle. And Mr. Compean has been here for a very long time, I don't know, how long have you been here, seeing him, Mr.? Fifty-four years.
Wow.
And he is just, and him and his wife are just amazing. They are very dedicated in working with the Queen of Peace Catholic Church here, who just celebrated their seventh anniversary, Mayor Bell, you were there.
Yes ma'am.
And this, the Compean family has deep roots in this community. And I just wanted to, you know, bring him and, to City Council, and some of you had not met him. Again, him and his wife are just remarkable people. They've devoted their time, they should be retired, but they're not, they are there helping. They, they help in every way that you can think. They are wonderful volunteers in helping us with our ministries and also with, with our food pantry. So thank you, because I think for me, this proclamation and celebration really is a tribute to him and many other Hispanics that live here in the city of Lamarck, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, absolutely. And you are right, he is not retired. Every time I volunteer at the food pantry of the Queen of Peace, I run into both of those. And they actually are working extremely hard, and God bless you for, for what you've done for our community.
Well, that's what we're here for, to help the community. And the feedback is a great opportunity, because there's still a lot of people in the country. It's our pleasure to help with the feedback.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, God bless you for that. Okay, council, we are now getting into item five, consent agenda. Remember, we're in a regular meeting, so if you want to discuss something, then you need to let me know, because it won't automatically be discussed. Item five A, and there's only one item, and I have several questions about this item, but let me read it, and then we'll, we'll get into questions. Item five A of the consent agenda, discussion possible action regarding police, fire, and detention officers paid quarantine leave to be established, according with Texas House Bill two zero seven-three, signed into law June fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one. Is Ms. Patty here? She is not, she is not.
Gus, can you handle it?
Yes, I had spoken to Ms. Patty, I was gonna speak to it. Okay, but first, does anybody have any questions about this item? Casey?
Yes, I do.
Okay, you want to start?
Sure. Let me kick it off. Um. Gus, I just had some immediate questions about some of the language in the quarantine policy. I specifically, my first question is around what immediately means. Let me see if I can find, sorry, I'm doing all of this by my virtual agenda, so. Pretty early on in there, it, it uses the terminology immediately in terms of like, how quickly a staff member will notify us of their exposure. And I wondered whether it was relevant for us to define what immediately means.
So, I, immediately would be as soon as the staff member learns of, learns of it. And I guess some background on this policy, the state legislature, in the last legislative session mandated that all municipalities adopt a quarantine policy for their, for their police, fire, and detention officers. This policy tracks the language of the statute. It is a paid leave policy, and it is a policy that has been mandated by the Texas State Legislature and was signed by the governor into law.
So the language is mandated as well?
Not, the language, not necessarily, but the, the provisions.
Right.
For example, the immediately that you asked about is not in the, is not in the statute, but it, it was put in to the draft, to the, to this policy that, that was promulgated just so that we, we would not be faced with a situation where an employee wouldn't, for some reason, would think that they either did not have to, or were some, for some reason, prevented from telling us immediately, that city management wanted to know as soon as possible, so that the, so that they could go, go into the quarantine policy, both for their protection and for the community.
Right, and obviously, I'm in full agreement that it should be immediately, which is one of the things that stuck out to me is, could that, does that have enough? Is there someone who could contest that, where we're to find ourselves in a position where they're like, well, I said it, I mean, immediately has no exact definition, you know, was the next day immediately? Was it within an hour immediately? Was it before the end of the workday? You know, just, just considering how many people could be exposed in that interim, you know what I mean? So I, I wondered if there was enough legal precedence around the term immediately? I know there's plenty of terms that have a legal background around them that I don't know, that kind of beef it up enough. But for me, that was, that was one element of concern, was that immediate could be vague for some folks, or maybe not specific enough, rather than vague. Additionally, then shortly after that, there's the, the date of quarantine. My question was around, how come it's, it's the date of quarantine shall begin no less than three days after the direct exposure? How, why is it phrased that way instead of something else, like a date of quarantine shall begin, you know, immediately, like the following workday immediately after the day that the city is notified of the exposure?
Sure, so that, that was, that's a, an end limit date. We would obviously, and, and what I, what I would say is that this policy, I think, was probably, or this bill was probably passed in response to COVID-nineteen, but it is not specific to COVID-nineteen.
That's right.
So communicable disease is not defined, in, it was not defined in the statute. So any communicable disease, and so, obviously, for, depending on a deferral to the local health authority, but while COVID-nineteen might be an immediate, there are other communicable diseases that may not be in an immediate quarantine beginning. It, it, it's just, obviously, or not, this policy was designed to interact with and mesh with the local, and incorporate the local health authorities quarantine procedures. So the three days is not a, obviously, we're, the management's not, you immediately report, but then we're gonna delay the quarantine period, that's not, it, it's a, it, it's just that, that is to allow for an interplay between the health authority and the court, and the quarantine policy itself.
Well, I, I personally would like to see that clarified a little more there, because as I read that, I think someone could read that and think that it means, if you, what you're saying makes perfect sense, you're right, like this was supposed to be beyond the scope of just COVID. But I read that, and I think, gosh, that certainly could read as if you're, you're, you know, you test positive for COVID, and we have up to three days to quarantine you. And obviously, that's not what we've been doing, that has not been the practice, that has not been how anything has laid out practically, but I find it to be a little at odds in the language.
Okay.
And then to your last, what you just said, I wondered if, should we, in this policy, as you said, because it is supposed to extend to beyond COVID, and it's any communicable disease, which includes, right, like pneumonia, the flu, like, should there be any definition of some diseases in there, just so that we do have some parameters to work with, like, or is that?
Um. The, unfortunately, the state has not, the state has mandated that we come up with a quarantine policy for communicable diseases and told us the framework of what it expects that policy to be. The state has not defined communicable disease. So what we do not want to be in, that is why the policy is drafted the way it is, because we would not want to be accused of not capturing all the communicable diseases that the state legislature was attempting to address.
Okay.
And, and I, yeah.
Okay. All right, well, those, those were my concerns, was just those, those two pieces of language, and then my final question, but that's all I've got.
Thank you, Casey, anyone else?
You got something to do? Yes. Okay. I had two items, clarification, Gus. I'm reading this on the second page process. So if the employee reports an exposure to communicable disease, the employee shall be sent home to obtain a test. And it says, if the employee refuses to test, this policy shall not apply, and the benefits of the policy are void. I read that, and for me, that means therefore, the employee, let's continue that, therefore, the employee is entitled to come back to work if the benefits of the policy are, are void. Is that an accurate assumption?
I, I would say, I would say that the benefits, specifically the paid time off, would be void.
Okay.
But if there is a CDC or Texas Department of Health mandated quarantine, if the employee refuses to test and they are required to, and they are required to quarantine, then they would not be entitled to take leave.
So that, but, but it, there's two parts of this last sentence. It says this policy shall not apply, and then it says the benefits of the policy are void. There's, there's, there's two negatives here.
That's correct, and, and we can't, we can, if you'd like, clarify that the, they would be forced to quarantine, but they would be forced to quarantine under both CD, either CDC or the local health district or the Texas State Department of Health Service.
Well, I would suggest that we get, that be clarified, because just from clarity here, where things are. The second question I have, and this is maybe more to Chase. If you know Chase, when, when we had our situation with the police officers that tested positive for COVID.
Yes, sir. During the winter storm.
During the winter storm, right, during the winter storm, Yuri. Were, were they paid per this policy? Did they receive the, the benefits that are, that are set forth in here? I know it's, it's not. It's not something that's required under this, but I'm just wondering how were our how were our policemen treated?
To my understanding, they they had to use their own sick time.
They had to use their own sick time.
Yes, sir.
And so my my question, my fellow counselors is how can we make that right? You know, how can we make that right?
I proposed that question to HR about a month and a half ago, two months ago. And she, from what she told me was that the officers were given the choice.
Okay.
Of whether use their leave or workman's comp. And from what Ms. Reese told me was that they had so much time on the books, they chose just to take that that time versus the workman's comp. But they were given the choice, she said, only like two officers chose a workman's comp. I see what you're saying with this new policy, but I mean, this one would not cover them.
Well, I'm just talking about like reimbursement for reasonable cost.
But I agree, we should we should do the right thing and reimburse them that time.
You know, the
That's what the HR had told me.
I would just like to see what we're happy to see here. Because to be applied retroactively to to those officers, that's just this is my.
And if Gus allows it, we can.
Okay.
Right, Gus? I check with Gus on everything, so just.
Thank you, thank you, Joe. Couple of things. Gus, how does this this law, because this is law?
That's correct.
And but and yet we have existing contracts with our police and our fire. So how is this going to work? Especially as it relates to our contract?
So this would be this is would be an unfunded mandate forced upon the city to provide additional benefits to to its police, fire, and detention officers.
So do we need to try to add this into our contract as we negotiate with police and fire? Do we need to add this ad language?
Absolutely, it would definitely for clarif clarity purposes help to have that in there so that everyone is aware of it. And the ability to take advantage of it, which is.
Okay. The other question I had was under the section that says communicable disease. It says that a list shall be established. Then it talks about a list that's already established, it looks like by the Texas Health and Safety Code. And among communicable diseases on that list are diseases such as the flu. And even a common cold. So who would you recommend to establish this list? Because when you think about it, we may be in a situation where where we are ordering officers to firefighters and the like to be quarantined behind the common cold. And and that may cause all sorts of other issues in their lives. They have families, they have children, they have other obligations outside of of working for the city of La Mar. And so who then would would be responsible, in your opinion, under your recommendation for establishing a list that Lamar would be able to go by? And a list that would be consistent with state law?
Um, I so a couple of things, one, I would say it would generally be safe to defer to the Texas State Department of Health Services and or the Galsen County Health District. The the other thing is that as you've identified, communicable disease is is not defined. Unfortunately, it I believe the legislature left it up to the executive branch to define that at a later date. But while this policy may be triggered by exposure to the cold or the common flu. The policy is designed or was drafted in such a way that quarantine will only be imposed if a quarantine is required by the local health officials or by health officials. So should the CDC or the Gals County Health District decide that a quarantine is required for the cold or the flu, then then obviously, we would that would that that would trigger this policy. And that would be something we would have to look at, but at this time, I'm not aware that there that that is being contemplated. But we can definitely look at and keep an eye out for when this list does come out and report that back to council so that you all are aware of it.
And the other thing is, and and you just mentioned that this quarantine will be imposed perhaps by our local health authority.
Correct.
Which brings me to my next point. This this quarantine cannot be imposed by our workers, individual physicians. That's what the policy says. The leave has to be ordered by the health authority, not not by your individual medical professional.
Correct, yes, the the policy is drafted in such a way that it would be in response to national pandemic.
So if the flu did end up on the list and your doctor diagnosed diagnosed with the flu, that doesn't automatically mean it has to be, you have to be ordered to quarantine.
Correct.
Okay, correct. Okay. The last thing I wanted to say is that I would like for us to add to the list of affected physicians. We have peace officers, jailers, detention officers, firefighters, and emergency medical technicians, but we don't have communications officers, right?
Or telecommunications, yeah.
Telecommunicators, yeah, telecommunications, because those persons actually have physical contact with our police officers. So if there is a an infection that is given to the police officer, then perhaps it might extend to the telecommunications. So that's all I have, counsel. Go ahead, Joe.
Procedural question. This is if if we vote on this, is this up for votes?
Possibly.
Okay, if we vote on it, this is a one vote, it's not a that two times second reading, first reading sort of stuff.
It's a it's a it's a one vote because it's it's not an ordinance. And so ordinances require the first and the second reading.
But it is an ordinance, isn't it? We're adopting an ordinance on our here, right?
Yeah, this is a policy that you would be adopting for the city as a whole or the certain the the police, fire, and detention and then the telecommunications.
So if we adopt this today, any of these possible amendments, can we then amend? We can amend the one that's adopted.
Yes, the council, yes, the council is as part of the motion to pass this, you are free to make any motion and offer an amendment to this policy. Or come back at a later date and make a motion to amend it. It is in the council's discretion.
So what we can do, counsel, if we're interested in in adopting this tonight, we can we can entertain a a motion in a second, and then we can make amendments. I think Gus is is taking notes on our amendments, he can read them back to us. And once we vote on the amendments, then we can come back and take up the entire policy as a whole and and act on that. If we wish to move forward with this tonight.
Is there urgency for us to adopt this tonight?
The not tonight, but very soon, the state has mandated that these be passed and adopted. My concern would be that if between now and when this policy is adopted, somebody it were to be triggered. Yeah, that that's now, of course, the council can direct Chase to and staff to follow this policy while we talk about it. But what we do not want is a to be in a situation where a police or fire or detention officer has to quarantine and and not they not get to take advantage of this policy.
So basically, we're saying that we'd like to adopt this policy that that has been promulgated by the state. And we are going to follow it up with some amendments that are of a local nature.
That's correct.
All right, guys, ladies and gentlemen. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move that we do, just as I suggested, to adopt this policy as per promulgated by the state with the understanding that that we will follow through with amendments that are tailored for our community.
Is that a motion for approval?
Remote motion.
Is that second?
Second.
All right, now let's get into these amendments. Would you like to read the amendments to us, Gus? Because then we're going to need a an emotion in a second as well.
So the first amendment is to add telecommunications, which are the dispatch personnel to the policy.
And supervisor.
Oh, and and the supervisor.
And the dispatcher supervisor.
So first amendment, although we hadn't made a motion, the first amendment is to add telecommunications, telecommunications and their supervisor.
Some will.
Yeah, yeah, we'll take them all at once. What's the second?
The the second one is to clarify the quarantining requirements for the communicable disease that that would that the and that the quarantine will begin as soon as the local, the CDC or local health department ordered orders that it begin.
Second amendment is the quarantine will begin as soon as the local health authority orders it. Anybody have a problem with that one? All right. Number three. Is there three?
Yes, the third is that if a if a affected personnel refuses a test, they are not entitled to the benefits of the policy. But the other provisions may still be applicable. That is to address the mayor pro tem's concern about somebody trying avoiding a test, but also thinking they could avoid the quarantine.
Third amendment is said to me again, Gus.
Sure. If some if an affected personnel refuses a a test, then the benefits of the policy may be void, but a quarantine period would may may also still apply.
Okay. Did y'all get that one?
Yeah.
Any problems with that? Number four.
The only thing I have on four is instead of saying may, put it as shall. Because if they're if they're supposed to be quarantined and you give them the option, they're not going to quarantine. So if you put shall quarantine, then that forces them to quarantine. And if they don't, they face disciplinary action. Versus give them the option of.
Anybody have any hot burn with that? Casey?
Could you say that one more time, Michael? I didn't fully follow, I apologize.
Oh, I just said change the the verbiage from may or from may quarantine, maybe subject to quarantine to shall subject to quarantine. Because if they're supposed to be isolated, but they don't, the word shall holds them accountable for any kind of disciplinary action.
Yeah, okay, cool, thank you. I'm in favor of that.
Okay. Any other amendments?
That was all I had.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to accept these amendments. So moved.
I make the motion.
You make a motion, Michael. You second? Any discussion on the amendments? We'll vote on the amendments, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Let's take the policy as a whole as amended. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? We're now to item six, public hearings, we have three of them, I will read all three of them. Then we will allow you to come and address those that pique your interest. Public hearings, six A, conduct a public hearing here, public input regarding adopting ordinance number letter O dash two zero two one dash zero zero one five, making appropriations for the support of the city of La Mar for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2021, and ending September 30th, 2022, appropriating money to a sinking fund to pay interest and principal due on the city's indebtedness. And adopting the annual budget for the city of La Mar fiscal year 2122. Six B, conduct a public hearing to hear public input regarding ordinance number letter O two zero two one dash zero zero one six, levying ad valorem taxes for the use of an operation of the municipal government of the city of La Mar, Texas for the 2021 tax year, providing for appropriate apportioning each levy for specific purposes, providing when taxes shall become due and when the same shall become delinquent if not paid. C, conduct public hearing to hear public input regarding adopting ordinance number letter O dash two zero two one dash zero zero one seven, amending appendix A, scheduling of fees and charges, code of ordinances of the city of La Mar, Texas, by amending prescribed solid waste collection charges. We will close the regular or the special meeting, excuse me, at at seven oh eight, and now we are entering our public hearing at seven oh eight. Are there any persons that would like to speak to us concerning item A? Any person that would like to speak to council concerning item A? Six B, are there any persons that would like to speak to council concerning item B? Any persons wishing to speak to council concerning item B? Six C, are there any persons wishing to speak to council concerning item six C? Any persons wishing to speak to council concerning item six C? We'll close the public hearing at seven oh nine, we'll enter our special meeting at seven oh nine. We're now in old business. Item seven A, discussion possible action regarding adopting ordinance number letter O dash two zero two one dash zero zero one five, making appropriations for the support of the city of La Mar for its fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2021, and ending September 30th, 2022, appropriating money to a sinking fund to pay interest and principal due on the city's indebtedness and adopting the annual budget for the city of La Mar for this 2021, 2022 fiscal year. I'll entertain a motion.
I second.
Second? You second, Casey?
I do.
Any discussion? Here now, we'll call for the vote, all those in favor, any opposed? Seven B, Suzie. Do we need you on seven B? Does anybody have questions for Suzie on seven B? Seven B, discussion possible action regarding adopting ordinance number letter O dash two zero two one dash zero zero one six, levying ad valorem taxes for the use of operation of the municipal government of the city of La Mar, Texas, for the tax year providing for the 2021 tax year, providing for apportioning each levy for a specific purpose, providing when taxes shall become due and when the same shall be delinquent if not paid. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
The second.
Second.
Any discussion? Here now, we'll call for vote, all those in favor? All right, roll call. Have at it, Kiara.
Sorry, council member district A. Council manager district B.
Aye.
Council member district C.
Aye.
Council member district D.
Aye.
And mayor.
Aye.
Okay, we'll show five ayes and no votes.
Thank you, ma'am. Item seven C, discussion possible action regarding adopting ordinance number letter O dash two zero two one dash zero zero one seven, amending appendix appendix A, schedule of fees and charges of the code of ordinance to city of La Mar, Texas by amending prescribed solid waste collection charges. schedule of fees and charges of the code of ordinance to city of Lamarck, Texas by amending prescribed solid waste collection charges. I'll entertain a motion.
Aye. I mean, so moved. Sorry. What's all you saying, aye?
The second.
I second.
Any discussion? Let the let the record reflect that per contract, the uh uh, the the waste management contract uh is due a three percent increase uh this year. Is that right, Suzie? Per contract. Okay.
Uh, and Mr. Remit, before we vote, I just also wanna, once again, as an agenda item, we still have to revisit the adjustments that we need to make on the water bill that we over had the overbuildings on.
Yeah, Chase has Chase has a report on that tonight. Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you for that, uh, Mayor Pro Tem. Any other discussion? Here now we'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Item, new business. Item eight A, the great chicken debates. Who's here for the chicken debate? All right, all right, let's see. Discussion possible action regarding adopting ordinance number letter O dash two zero two one dash zero zero one eight, amending section eight point eight of the city code to allow for the keeping of hands, making various findings and approving for an effective date. This is the first reading of this ordinance. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to discuss.
If that's what you want, sir.
Yes.
Is that a second?
I second.
We have a motion and a second to discuss.
Just to discuss.
All right, have at it. You wanna go first, Michael?
Yes, sir. The ordinance that is um the ordinance that is the first reading, there's lots of changes that need to be made to it, because these are not some of the stuff that we discussed, and I know legal had said they just wanted to get some on paper, so we can address it and tweak it and fix it. Um, for instance, the fences. The fences, I mean, it's ridiculous to have ten foot fences. I think that's I mean, that's higher than what most privacy fences are. And some of the districts, some of the houses that have it, they're just cyclone fences, so they're four foot, five foot fences. So ten foot is not the appropriate one. Another one is the the um number of chickens, number of hens, I'm sorry, number of hens. I know we were talking about limiting them to like ten versus what's in the ordinance of twenty five. I mean.
Can I hop in here real quick? I'm so sorry, Mike.
Go ahead.
I think I can provide a little clarity here, too. So I got to see the first version that Gus had put together after our uh last discussion. And I made some suggestions, and I think because everyone was looking to me as uh like a chicken whisperer last time, which I don't know is so rightfully given, but um I know he made some changes based on some of the suggestions I made via email. Um, and I included, you know, the mayor and Chase on that, but knowing we would all talk about it again. So that was one of the things that I suggested that after thinking that like, you know, we had, I I do believe we had all settled around ten. That was my note.
I think ten was there.
And then I I did more looking and I was thinking more and more about like the realities of what will go out when we pass this, like how this will actually get applied, and I was thinking twenty five chickens is really not that many chickens at all, y'all. Um, and that's a pretty reasonable, that that actually gives people the ability to have a substantial size home backyard flock that actually feeds them. And maybe, you know, and consistently feeds them versus ten, which is a lot less. But I felt very strongly that if we make it that larger number, that twenty five, um, there does need to be the corresponding language around what's an appropriate amount of square footage for those chickens, so you don't end up with twenty five chickens in a very, very small coop. There are some things that I I've suggestions I made to Gus that I at seeing them in uh writing, there's some things I wanna change, too. So I agree, there's still some things that need to get changed, but I wanted to step in before anyone thought Gus was just like, la 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 la, twenty five. That was totally based on feedback I gave. Um, and I also just wanna commend Gus for trying his best to collate all of the feedback and I know all the and and your own research and just get something on paper so that we can tear it apart.
I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't wanna be tearing apart your stuff.
That's why it's here.
Yeah, I mean, it's good. It's a good thing, because now we have some, we have stuff to work with.
Right, right.
Not where we want it yet, but I I feel really confident that we can get it there and but I I will hand the floor back over to you, Michael. I don't mean to take it all, but rest assured.
You're good, you're good. Minimum square feet of three feet per hen. That's from what I've learned, that's that's perfect. Um, they say two to three feet if you don't enclose a outdoor run. Other than that, I believe it's eight or ten feet if you have an outdoor run. So three feet, I mean, that's good. Ten square feet for the run. The fence. I, have we had any big chicken escapes lately? Like the great chicken run or anything?
Been a lot of chickens escaping.
Yeah, I I don't think I've really heard of any chickens escaping. Yeah, and they're not attacking. Do do we need the fence at six feet? Or, because like I said, the standard cyclone fence is what, about four? Four or five?
Are you, you, okay, you're in, you're in the coop? Where are you?
Yes, sir, under the chicken runs.
Are you talking about the fence, the fence for the run?
Oh, my bad, I'm, I was thinking the the residential fence, okay. Yeah, I can go with that. You can go with six feet. Six feet for the run, the run fence.
Here's another part where I wanna interject here. So when I first, when we first started with this and I made the suggestion that we define what a chicken run is, um, because originally that wasn't in here at all. What I was thinking and what I think is appropriate, um, based on, again, like what the realities of a backyard chicken coop really is like, there should be an enclosed chicken coop, right? Where there's, in my opinion, that three foot square footage per chicken is appropriate, right? Like, like Michael said, everything I know, all of my chicken keeping books say two to three feet. With the with the provision that 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 sheltered space had, these chickens have access to a bigger space. And so what I was, what I was intending a chicken run to be is, I mean, it can be a structure that someone builds in addition to the coop that has fencing and has a roof, that's fine, but it's not necessary. Someone's backyard could be a chicken run as long as it is fenced. So in my mind, um, there's a little bit of confusion in here, and it might be my fault for suggesting we define chicken run and not saying a chicken run can be a fenced in backyard if the chickens have access to that from their coop. Because what we all want is chickens that don't escape. We want there to be a proviso that code enforcement can show up, and if you have a coop and it open and your chickens just can get out and they can wander from your yard into your neighbor's yard with no kind of fencing, well, that's not allowed, right? We wanna make sure that chickens are staying in an enclosed space. But in my opinion, it doesn't need to be an additional structure built, attached to the coop or whatever. It can be, but that's not necessary, and it certainly doesn't need to have six foot high fences. It just needs to be.
Okay, so maybe the verbiage.
Yeah, no, I need to, I need to uh interject that, Casey. I I think the problem with that, with 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 the with the neighbors fenced yard being the run is is it starts to cause problems with with B. Uh, and B says keeping of hands near residence. And it says it shall be unlawful for any person to keep, harbor, or maintain hands within twenty five feet of the property line, right? So what happens is if your yard is the run, then chickens move, you know, freely through your yard. They are then violating the twenty five foot rule that is in keeping the hands near residences. And then the other problem was that with that is they they drop the, uh, what do you call it, scratch or whatever you would feed chickens? I don't know what you feed them. Uh, if they're eating and moving, I don't know how that works. But 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 there are all sorts of issues that we're gonna hear from the folks that don't necessarily care for chickens. Uh, and so we have to find a way to make sure that both sides are are satisfied with this. And the chicken run was one of the ways that would be acceptable. Uh, it doesn't have to be a six foot cyclone fence. I don't, I don't, you know, have any issue with that. But what I'm saying is whatever we do today and tonight and in the coming days, we need to make sure that that uh those those hens are are uh in position where they don't violate that twenty five feet, because I can guarantee you, if we don't put some sort of distance and we allow them to roam freely, we're gonna have problems from the people that don't necessarily love chickens. And so we'll be right back to square one.
Well, uh, I agree. I agree, it would violate that, and but I I am of the opinion that 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 proviso and B, that the twenty five, that we should get rid of that. It just, I understand that some people will I think so, I think a little more information might help with that, because it it's just, I think in reality, the chicken run being an an entirely additional structure with, especially if it require, I mean, it should absolutely not require a roof. But if it requires, you know, fencing of a certain height in addition to the coop, and it has to be twenty five feet from the property line, that's completely barring a lot of our homeowners from even having chickens at all. We basically have created a policy or we've created an ordinance that prevents them from having any backyard chickens whatsoever.
Casey.
Size of their lot.
Casey. Casey.
Yes.
Say say the part again where where you where you're suggesting that we're we're basically making it impossible for them to have chickens. What what part of what we're talking about suggests that?
The twenty five foot from the property line. I think for this whole time, I, that was one of the things that I think I either missed or misunderstood or something got lost in translation that I am of the opinion it should only that the restrictions from our neighbors, because I agree, there needs to be some type of language around how close can your chickens be from the, from your neighbor's dwelling. But that that's where I think it should live. I think that's more specific, and I think that's actually more practical to say that the chicken coop, the, they know that the where the chickens sleep and whatnot, has to be twenty five feet from or it has to be no no less than twenty five feet from the nearest dwelling excluding the owner of the chickens, which I, which I believe that language is in there. It's just that there's this additional language around the property line, and that's the one that effectively prevents a lot of people from even having chickens at all because of the size of their lot.
Okay.
So, and I think it's a very practical solution to say, if someone has built a coop that code code enforcement can show up and see, okay, you have a coop that is locked, it has a roof, it meets this minimum requirement of space for your for your animals, um, your chickens, not your animals. And then they can open up into your backyard and they can, you know, walk around eating fire ants, doing their thing, doing their chicken thing. And even if they go up to the edge of your fence, it you have to have a fence, you know, I'm not saying that it can be adjust up to the property line like that. You would have to have a fenced in backyard or fence, something fenced in where the chickens, that was their run. That's what we're getting at, right, is we want chickens to not get into their neighbor's yard. We want them not to be running amok, and we want them to be protected. So I think that meets all the requirements very, very satisfactorily. And you know, as far as chicken feed getting into neighbors' yards because of chickens eating in the, I mean, my experience with chickens, and I would imagine a lot of like owners, that's not a very common occurrence, um, especially, especially if you're the owner. Like, you're gonna, I mean, that that's a waste of chicken feed, for sure. If you're like throwing chicken feed so that it can get all in your neighbor's yard, the chickens are not gonna then take that feed and spread it into the neighbor's yard.
Okay, okay. Well, let's see if we're gonna, we're gonna open the floor in a minute. Uh, let's see if council has any any other discussions at this point.
We could move, I mean, I like Casey's idea of just moving that, keeping the the coop twenty five feet, not the, because that be is I mean, like, like she said, it's gonna limit, but if we can possibly just.
Oh, no.
Keep it twenty five from the neighbor's house. So I think that would be more feasible versus what B says. Because B talks about maintaining the hands, keeping them or harboring them, because that would not.
Ms. Louis?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, well, yeah, Ms. Louis, we're gonna get to you in a minute, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. What you doing, uh, Michael? I'm sorry.
The only other thing I have is
We're gonna get to y'all in a minute.
Storage requirement. Let's see it. The last one is the food storage. I agree, I mean, I think we should just keep it as non-permeable versus metal. I mean, just specifying non-permeable metal. Because if metal will tend to get hot, and I don't know what the scratch would do if it gets hot, if it's like like candy or something, it'll just glue together. Keep separated. But, I mean, plus it gives them the option of using anything that's non-permeable. It gives the owner a chance to do what they want for a metals or for a food storage. As long as it can be locked. So that's the only other.
Did you say non-permeable?
Right, still has to be non-permeable, but let the owner decide whether they want metal or
A plastic.
Or plastic or.
Long as it's non-permeable. Gotcha, gotcha.
Correct.
What else you got, Michael?
That's it. That's all I have.
Because this, uh, let let me ask you something, Gus, when you came up with this ordinance, or did you look at the best practices that we asked?
Yes, and I um, I looked at a surround, at a number of surrounding cities. And and I will tell you, can only, they ran the gamut between very restrictive, um, almost to probably not conducive to chicken all the way to pretty much do whatever you want.
But but I'm talking about, but I, but but I want us to compare it to to cities that are clean. Cities that have a good track record for cleanliness and because it reading your ordinance is a is a good start, but I really want to look at the best practices for cities that are clean so that our code enforcement can enforce them all over the city. As a person who has, who goes all around the city every week, personally, in my own car, to everybody's district, I have seen chickens loose, I have seen roosters loose, I have seen, to the point that I couldn't get out of my car. And and I talked to Casey about it, because it was in her district. My biggest issue is uh cleanliness, that it's not a nuisance to neighbors. We are a growing city. We are trying to attract families. I thought the limit for ten was about not having so many chickens that you can't keep up with it. And that's why they were getting loose and on cars and all that, right? And I'm not talking about what I heard, I'm talking about what I've seen in my own eyes, traveling through the city. And and that's, that's my concern. You gotta have it, to me, it it need, it's a good start, though. And I can tell you took a little bit of this, look at that, because, well, when I look at best practices, it is, I'm looking at cities that have a clean record, where the streets are clean. And we, what we're trying to set is a standard. Uh, and it seems like we went from here to here, and now we're trying to kinda get a glitchy, you know, and the last time that when I looked at, that was in our packet. I definitely wanna talk a little, probably one more time, a little bit about it, but it's a good start. But we, and I'm just gonna be honest, because this is, this has gone on for a long time. And I'm just, for me, I'm all about, let's do our best. And we need to look at the best practices from clean cities, not just the cities around us, because every city around us is not clean. And not every city cleans the way they should, right? And we want to be the experts at this. We want to set the standard for what it means to clean it up, because you know, some people do a great job, but there are some people that have more than twenty five chickens. And they're all over the place. Now you take out the roof, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, no roosters.
About about that. Now, as far as the fencing. We just, uh, we have so many places in our cities that look so mismatched and so tacky. And this with the tall fence, wide fence, that that part, I think we need to look at a little bit more to kind of gauge that so we can have a standard. Cause you don't, you wanna, don't want to have it all all over the place. So that's that's a little bit. And I'm glad you brought up about the chicken run, because I didn't understand that either case. I was like, what is it? What is a run? So I I'm still gonna research that, Casey, to to kind of figure that out. But I'm glad, Mary, you clarified it, that it's not the whole area. It's the the smaller area, correct? Uh, but, uh, I do think it's a good start. Thank you so much. And that's, that's all I have, because you guys kind of brought the issue that I had questions about.
I'm thinking I need to keep my mouth shut right now. And I'd like to hear from residents that are, I'd like to hear from residents right now.
Okay, we're gonna do that. Let me, let me read something to you about the history and then Ms. Ms. Lewis, are you about ready?
Can you guys still hear me?
Yeah, let me read this and then and then we'll, we'll take you and then we'll go to the floor. How's that?
Okay.
This is just some history. Uh, it's been said that we have not touched, uh, our chicken ordinance, I believe, since nineteen seventy two. I thought somebody may have said that. Uh, but let me give you, give you some history. Uh, since nineteen seventy two, in nineteen eighty, the city council adopted an ordinance, animals and file, that added a section to the code that restricted file to be kept within one hundred feet of an occupied dwelling. Even in two thousand and six, uh, the ordinance, uh, an ordinance was adopted that included file not being able to run at large. And if their runs were not kept clean, if their runs, two thousand and six, were not kept clean and sanitary and in a clean and sanitary manner, uh, it would be considered a public nuisance. So I said that to say, uh, this has been a process. We have looked at this. Other councils have looked at this. Uh, and so I want to make sure that we understand that, uh, this is not a uh, an ordinance that has not been touched since nineteen seventy two, but indeed and in fact, uh, it was, uh, it was, uh, acted upon in nineteen eighty and in two thousand and six. Ms. Lewis.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so the big thing I disagree with is the twenty five foot rule off of the property line.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, we measured that would disqualify us and I'm pretty sure eighty percent of Lamarck would not be allowed to have chickens. So you guys wrote that up. It was kind of I don't know. I don't want to say slap in the face, but we're all trying hard to find middle ground and the twenty five foot rule is not even close to finding middle ground for those that do want chickens. Um, I do agree that chickens need a chicken run. So that was one of the biggest issues I found talking to other citizens that don't necessarily like chickens. They don't like them in their yard, in their flower beds, in their gardens. So I think that's a rule we really should keep to keep them in a chicken run. Not free range and a chicken run that will keep chickens from going into other neighbors' yards. Making them upset. I know our neighbor would not like to have chickens in her backyard. In order to do that, we would have a chicken run to keep them contained. I fully support that. I don't support all these new rules about building a chicken coop. Cause you see, there's other people in the community that already have chicken coops. So what are they supposed to do? Are they supposed to knock their chicken coops down and rebuild? The way it's set up right now. They probably don't meet the qualifications. And that's how I feel.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes, sir.
You did very well today.
Thank you.
Hold tight, hold tight, because we might need you again.
Okay.
Okay, who wanted to speak in the audience? Mr. Lowry, Mr. Loftus, Mr. Wilson, Mr. Pennington. Mr. Lowry, you may approach.
Mr. Lowry, Cedar Drive. Um, the reason the chicken thing has come up so much nationwide is because of COVID. Not so much as a a want, but a need. It's a, it's a source, a food source. Um, some things, I don't know if anybody here has ever lived on a farm or grew up, but I did. Um, born and raised on my whole life, pretty much. Uh, the bug thing that I heard somebody had said about before, um, that's actually a food source for them. So if somebody has bugs in their house, that's their personal issue. That's nothing to do with chickens, because chickens will eat the bugs. Uh, twenty five foot rule is, uh, obviously it prohibits almost everybody in the city of Lamarck, like you said, about eighty percent. So that would be unreasonable, in my opinion. Uh, chicken scratch, chicken feed, that would go in the coop. And I don't know if you guys know or not, but the reason you have a coop at night is to lock them up to prevent them from having predators attack them. Uh, a fencing, a three foot fence would be good enough. You can actually clip chicken wings, okay? You can clip the feathers and they don't fly. So everything is kind of just getting blown out of proportion. Um, it's a food source. People need it. And I don't think anybody here should have the, uh, right to tell somebody they can't have food. So that's my opinion.
Mr. Lowry. If you had to give up anything in this ordinance, what would you give up?
Uh, me personally, I would give up, uh, all of it. I mean, you want to know the truth? I mean, honestly.
In the spe- in the spirit of compromise.
Yeah.
What would you?
In, well, twenty five foot rule, whichever size lots fifty feet, sixty feet, so you're preventing everybody from having chickens. So it was kind of a slap in the face. Um, the amount of hens, twenty five hens is a little steep. Um, but then again, you can't say, you know, what size is a person's family that wants those hens? Is it, is it three people? Is it twelve people? I mean, who knows? So, I mean, that's up to the person that's living there. And and let your chickens out and run roam, you know, and around your yard. That's a good thing. Um, living on a farm, we had wood heat and having wood, you get termites. Having chickens, you don't have termites. So there's, there's benefits to having chickens. Uh, it's gonna keep, you know, bugs and stuff away from your home. So it's beneficial. Yeah, when I had over a hundred chickens, I used to, I used to raise them. So it's kind of, uh, I don't own any, but it's just kind of a funny thing to be talking about, uh, chickens and and it's a food source. I mean, I I don't think that I don't think that anybody in this room could tell anybody else what they're allowed to to have for food now. Bringing a cow down to your house, I could see that would be an issue. But, I mean, a goat for milk or something, if somebody has, uh, you know, allergies to, you know, milk and they have to have goats, I'm not opposed to that either. You know, I believe it's, you know, I think a little different to people a lot of times, but I would get rid of the, uh, I I would keep a coop. Obviously, you need to keep predators away, but, um, that's about it, really.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Loftus.
Hello, once again. So you want to know what the slap in the face is? To have an ordinance on the books and it's totally ignored over the years continuously. That's my slap in the face. I've been living next door to the chickens and the roosters for the last eleven years. And I've been here coming back again and again for the last eleven years. The chickens was removed and the roosters was removed and then they showed up again. And guess what? Code enforcement said it's okay. So why did they get removed the first time? Cause it was against the rule. But then they showed up, like I said. So how did we get here? Once again, or leadership in the code enforcement department, not following the rules. That's why we're here and we keep having the same debate about the chickens. Some people got chickens and they just now got chickens because they were told that they could have the chickens. They don't have enough space to have the chickens, but oh, it's okay, go ahead and have them. So what does that tell y'all? People ain't doing their job. They're not following the rules that's set forth and those people are responsible for this debate that we're having right now. I don't like living next door to the chickens, because the dude that I live next door to, he don't even keep his yard clean. So he damn well not gonna keep the chicken coop clean. That's evident by me constantly complaining about the violations over there. Those photos you got in those packets, code enforcement took those photos. Same photos from twenty ten to twenty twenty one, you looking at them. Identical, the yard, same. Nothing's changed over there. Code enforcement goes back there and they says, no, we ain't gonna do nothing about that. So we're gonna keep having this debate as long as people not doing their job. Cause today is chickens, tomorrow is something else if they're not doing their job. So that's how we got here. That's the slap in the face. This is slap in the face to everybody. Even the people that got the chickens, that wasn't supposed to have the chickens, they should have been told no from the beginning and then we wouldn't be here. So that's the slap in the face to me. Going from a hundred feet to twenty five feet, it's ludicrous, in my opinion. Because now the free range, yeah, that's a problem. Some may say it's not. I tell you, it is, because I live next door to chicken. Y'all don't live next door to chickens. How many y'all live next door to chickens? None of y'all. So you don't know what it's like. You don't know what it's like hearing roosters crowing five o'clock in the morning. Three o'clock in the evening, all day, all night in some cases. You don't know what that's like. So you don't understand my pain. And until you live next door to chickens and roosters, then you can see it. So you make a decision based on somebody that say they gonna do right by the chickens. When I know I gotta live next door to somebody that ain't gonna do right by the chickens. He shouldn't even have chickens right now. Cause code enforcement made him get rid of them, but they allowed them to come back too, with the same rules that's in place. Even after getting a directive from the city manager saying, hey, follow the rules. What'd they do? Nothing. They still getting our tax dollars. They getting a check by for not doing the job. Disgusting. Very disgusting. So y'all take that in.
Mr. Loftus.
Yes, sir.
May I favor?
Yes, sir.
What, what, what would you be willing to give up in this ordinance? And I'm asking every, everybody from the audience that's, because this is a city and we have to learn to, as best we can, compromise, because we all have to. And I know your pain. I know your pain. I'm just, we're just speaking about.
Disgusting, very disgusting.
We're just speaking about the ordinance, but I I do know your pain.
So let me ask this question. Ducks and guineas, where do they come in at this?
Ducks are considered foul and they're not, they're not authorized by the ordinance at all.
Okay, so.
Exactly. This this applies to just chickens.
Even the, even the current ordinance on the books addresses zero foul.
So my question is to be clear, can someone have ducks?
No.
Okay.
The the current ordinance says on the books has no foul.
Right. So that's why we here, because nobody's following the rules. So the compromise, where we at with the, uh, roosters, no roosters, right?
No roosters.
The hundred foot rule kept chickens away from my house. Supposedly. I'm good with going down to seventy five and it may still keep them away from my house.
Okay.
That's compromise.
That's my compromise. As long as they can stay away from my house and the free range for sure. But if they can stay away from my house and I don't have to worry about them free ranging and all up onto my fence and my dogs barking, like code enforcement said that they wanted to record my dogs barking at chickens while they were out there. That actually really infuriated me also.
So, so would it be safe to say that you would be willing to to support a chicken run?
No.
Okay. It's your.
I don't want chickens next door to me, period. That's, that's just my opinion. I I don't want them in my neighborhood. But I know for some reason that they may still be there. My thing is, the guy who lives next door to me, who was forced to get rid of his chickens, he shouldn't be allowed to have chickens ever again, because he's been in violation from day one he moved in.
Yeah.
From the very first day he moved in, we told him you couldn't have it and what'd he do? He brought them anyway. So people like him should be ex- they should be excluded, period. He shouldn't never have to worry about that again. That's just where I'm at. Now, for somebody else that's probably following the rules, maybe so. But I know who not following the rules and I know who not gonna follow the rules, because his own verbiage is in those packages that I gave you, that he ain't gonna get rid of. And experience tells me that he's not. Because that's just the type of person that he is. He's not one that's gonna follow rules. And when you got a department that's not gonna enforce the rules, then there you have it. It makes for a bad situation all around this city. And like Ms. Jancy said, chickens and roosters running amok. We got city employees riding this town all day, every day. They see the violations. Nobody does nothing. They riding around in high air condition and I'm not trying to bash our city employees.
I get it, I get it.
But I'm just telling you the reality of it all.
Sure.
We got good city employees here, you know what I mean? But we gotta get this under control. We shouldn't have to keep coming back here about code violations when we paying people to enforce the rules that's on the books. That's something we shouldn't even have to keep going around. Hit them in their pocket and let them realize that when I break a rule, I'll pay the cost.
Yeah.
If you go speeding down the highway, should Lamarck Police Department say, oh, it's okay? Go ahead. I ain't gonna write you no ticket. Same as apply to code violations.
Yeah.
Make them pay.
I got you.
My compromise is.
Seventy five feet.
Seventy five feet.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wilson.
I started out with chickens that they were given to us. I didn't know the laws at that time, or else I probably wouldn't have taken them, but these things have changed when, uh, we had so-called neighbor, which lives three blocks away, can re- report us. So the compliance officers that came out and told, talked to us and we, he said, if you just go ahead and kind of screen them off. So I did a nice little screen thing. They already had a chicken hat, chicken coop. And, uh, my problem was, well, this guy lives three blocks away from me. I don't know how he found out we had chickens, but he did when my neighbors didn't know. My two neighbors behind me didn't know. The church is across the street. There's an empty lot on one side and a uh, transportation building is on the other side. I live on Hal. It's right up the street here. And, uh, well, it was kind of a, we were shocked really, because the guy's not even our neighbor. He is a city neighbor as a city Lamarck neighbor, but not a next door neighbor. So, you know, all this has been, you know, I retired in, at the end of May and I've been dealing with this thing since then. And it's driving me crazy. I can't even, you know, I don't like dealing legal stuff when this, you know, I'm not a guy that likes to break the law. I've been in this city fifty something years. Probably more than most of y'all have been living. And, you know, I've seen a lot of different changes and all kinds of things going on. But to have to, I mean, I feel like the guy back here who, you know, he doesn't want it, but he doesn't want chickens, but I want chickens. I want them for my grandson. Now I have a great granddaughter coming over and that's why she going to Papa's. Yeah, we're gonna go feed the chicken. Okay, and she'll get up and she'll, whenever she has certain shoes that she wears, that she can wear in the chicken yard. And when she, they were talking to her the other day and going over Papa's, she would just been got on her chicken shoes. But that's, uh, there's a couple of things. There's one thing. I, I built the chicken coop. Whenever she has certain shoes that she wears, that she can wear in.
Can you, can you do?
But anyhow, I build a chicken coop. It has. They just go in there and roost at night. I don't have to put them up. They'll go in there. When it gets dark, that's their natural thing to go where it's safe. Okay, that, that chicken coop has a, a second level there where they can just go under there when it's raining. And then that on the ground level is covered with, uh. It's covered, the whole thing. And then I don't know how many square feet it is. I don't even have any idea. And I was intending to build another chicken house, but I'm kind of waiting to see what happens here with this thing. And as far as a twenty five foot rule. I guess if I could put it in my, in my kitchen. Inside the house or in my patio. Or I can put it across from the Methodist church. Which is twenty five feet from the city. Property line where the city's line is and that would be right beside my garage. So, you know, my deal is. We don't have a problem with chickens as far as cleanliness. It's no big deal to me. I mean, it's. It's kind of a natural thing to keep, yeah. Nearly clean. But hey, they're gonna poop. I mean. That's just a natural part of being a chicken, but. I don't know what I could give up. I mean, for instance. If you just let them roam, the only, the only drawback I can, I can probably work it out with around the garage and across the Methodist church. But. Next door is like empty lot. There is no neighbor on my one side. My mother-in-law lives behind us and I can, I can scoot it up five feet and she'll be twenty five feet. Or I can put it in my kitchen or in my patio. Or the garage. So my deal is, what do you give up on that? I mean.
I, I, I get it. I, I do. We live in a community, right? And, 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 and there are all sorts of people that live in this community with us. With all different backgrounds, with all different, uh, likes and different dislikes, right?
Sure.
And so this. Is a, is a small matter. It, it really is. But, but, uh, it, it's a very contentious matter. So when you live in a community and you have a contentious matter. The only thing we can do is learn to compromise. And, and, and. Nobody gets everything they want. Right? And so we have to then, we have to then go about this process of offering things to each other. And so that's why I'm picking brains to see what would you be willing to give up? Because we have to live together, right? And, and so we have to find something, uh, that we are willing to share and to give up. In order for other people to then be willing to give up some of their ideas and some of their thoughts and some of, some of, of their opinions. That's the only way that we can live in a cohesive community, right? Is through this art of compromise. And it's not always an art and most times it's ugly and nobody's happy and people walk away mumbling under their breath. But then the city, the community moves on, right? And, and we're able to live together. And so that's why I'm picking your brain. So. Would you be willing to, to have a chicken run?
Well, I don't really understand a chicken run because. I mean, I can do that, yeah.
It, it's just, it's, it's just an enclosed space for the chickens to be able to roam, right? Which many people, uh, in, in, that have commented to us. Have said that they don't have a problem with chickens roaming throughout the entire yard and that's great. But then there are other people that live in this community that may have a problem with that, right? So we have to, as a community, learn to compromise.
Well, yeah, chicken run is great. I mean, basically mine is a chicken run, period. I've got a, a screened in park. For instance, say my property comes out. This, my driveway over here, my property runs right here, my house sits over here. Okay, right here I built the fence. There's a fence on this side, fence here, the chickens are here. I also have a fence stand behind all the way alongside my house out towards the transportation.
And that may be, uh, that may be a chicken run. I, I haven't seen it and to be honest with you. If I did see it, I wouldn't know what it would look like, right? Because I'm not, I'm not a chicken person. But, but, but I don't know, but perhaps you may already have a chicken run. If it's an enclosed area, then, then that might be considered a, a chicken run. So.
I close it off tonight, but.
Right, right.
Now I got something trying to get in there and get them. So if I can. Whatever happened here, I'm gonna fix it up.
Sure, sure, sure. I, I, I thank you, Mr. Wilson, for your comments and I think that we're moving forward. We're making progress.
Uh, one more thing.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I have to go back to. Your last statement, last meeting that we had concerning chickens, you said that. To go ahead and take care of all the. I guess people have been made of the compliance officer. Anyhow, I gotta go to court on the fifth of October. Because, well, I don't even know why, but I mean.
Be, because the ordinance and, and that, that.
At, at that ordinance, yes.
Right, we, we, we're still under the, the, the existing ordinance that requires one, uh, one hundred feet. Uh, of distance between the structures, uh, and the coop. Uh, and so that ordinance is being enforced apparently. Or, or to your point, Mr. Loftus, maybe it's attempting to be enforced. Uh, I, I don't know where Kathleen is on that, but if you received a letter. If you received a notice to appear, it's because, uh, the city manager has given direction to code enforcement to follow the ordinances.
But the problem was your previous city manager. Put that on hold while they, y'all were dealing with the chicken thing. So in the meantime, if I go to court and they find me guilty, that's gonna cost me two hundred eighty one dollars. I'm on a fixed income now, so you know, no, I just spent three hundred dollars just keeping my electricity going on, on my generator. I just got power Saturday, so that's.
Well, two things, two things, Mr. Wilson. The previous city manager actually directed the code enforcement to enforce the ordinance. He did not put it on hold. He put his, he put the pedal to the metal.
Well.
So that, that's.
He told us. I know. Hey, I'm an innocent person here.
I know, I know, but, but here, here's the, here's the deal. I don't know what he told you, but point of affirmation. There is proof that he told, uh, Kathleen Van Sterven to enforce the, uh, file ordinance. That's, that's a fact. Uh, and he told her to enforce it vigorously. Here's the good news. I got good news for you. You just so happen to be having this conversation in front of our new municipal court judge. She's sitting right there in the purple blouse. And so you're probably gonna see her and she's hearing everything that you have to say tonight. And so if there's an issue of fines and forfeitures. That would be the person that you would have to, probably not tonight, right? But at some point, at some point, I'm sure that she would love to have a discussion with you as it relates to the issue that you're having. But it's, it's going to get better. We're gonna figure this out. Uh, you have a right to own chickens, right? And, and we respect that. This is America. Uh, at the same time, we have to make sure that your rights aren't. Infringing on the rights of others in any undue or unnecessary way. And so that's what we're dealing with tonight.
Well, regardless of however this thing turns out, we're gonna follow the law.
Yes, sir.
I'm not a law breaker. I never have been. And, well, I've got rest of one time.
Well, we, we not gonna talk about that.
I made a mistake and made a U-turn front cop, but that's another story another day.
And you went to, anyway, we ain't talking about.
Yeah, but anyhow, I appreciate it.
But Mr. Wilson, we'll figure it out. We'll figure it out. I think that you're gonna, you're gonna be able to keep your chickens. I, I just, I feel that in my bones. It'll work out. Thank you for your compromise. Mr. Pennington? Mr. Laro, are you wishing to speak again?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, Mayor Council. I got a couple of questions and some comments.
Move the mic.
I got some questions and some comments here. First of all, you've addressed the issue of keeping hens and roosters, section C. And it says it should be unlawful for any person to keep, harbor, permit, or maintain roosters within the city. I think that's wonderful. And the main reason for that, I think, is because of the roosters crowing. But by Councilman McColl's. Own admission and expertise on chickens, some hens do crow. And you haven't addressed anything in here covering that. So what are we gonna do if a person has a hen that's crowing and their neighbors are complaining?
Let me ask you this again. I have no, I have, I don't have any idea, uh, how to keep chickens. Or hens or however that works. Do all hens crow?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I'm not a chicken person. I don't know. But, but evidently some hens do crow. Am I right, Ms. McColl?
You are indeed right.
Yes, so.
Call him a rooster.
Might I make a recommendation? Under section C, where it talks about the unlawful roosters, make that parentheses one. And add a parentheses two, which says it shall be unlawful for any person to keep, harbor, permit, or maintain a crowing hen within the city. And I would also add, under the next section, section D, where a condition of premises where hens are kept. I would add this statement. Hen shall not be permitted to create any annoying sounds such as crowing, which may disturb adjacent property owners. You're gonna find somebody that says only roosters crow. And I think if you add that other sentence in there, you would be able to cover that and take care of that.
Under C?
That would be under D. I'd add that sentence under D.
Say it again. Read it again, David.
Hen shall not be permitted to create any annoying sounds such as crowing, which may disturb adjacent property owners.
You getting it, yes?
I'm not trying to do your job, I'm just trying to make.
And we're taking notes. We're, we're actually listening to y'all when y'all present, uh, because this is your government, right?
Yes.
And so we need to make sure that we're being responsive.
Okay. In, in reference to free ranging chickens and not using a chicken run, I am in totally disagreement with that. I think you need to have a chicken run. I mean, you're already reducing the, the distance. I mean, the law that's on, coordinates is on the books now is a hundred feet and you're reducing that to twenty five. We're proposing to reduce it to twenty five. So to allow chickens to run. Within twenty five feet of a property line, I think is all wrong. I think you should have to have them inside a chicken run. I don't want chickens running up against my fence. I don't want them getting into my yard. But, uh, I really think that they need to be kept inside a chicken run. The other issue I have, under section F. Uh, parentheses one, bottom sentence says, last sentence says, there shall not be a fee for a permit under this section. And I was wondering why that is. Because I went through the Lamar code of ordinances. And I found things like section five dash eight. Alarm systems, annual permit fee is twenty dollars. Now, we don't charge everybody in Lamar a fee. We only charge the people that have alarm systems. Section fourteen dash four twenty five. Rental unit registration fees. Annual fee for the first rental is a hundred dollars and additional rentals is twenty dollars. Now, we don't charge all the taxpayers that. We only charge the people who have rental property those fees. Section seventeen dash fifty five, coin operated machines. Annual occupation tax or one fourth of the tax collected by the state. That's more of a tax than a fee, but it's still collected annually from the people who have coin operated machines. Section seventeen dash sixty. Parenthesis C, parentheses one. Amusement redemption machine, annual inspection license fee. Or annual inspection handle license fee is a thousand dollars for a machine. We don't charge all the taxpayers that. We only charge the people that own the machines. You see where I'm going here? Only the people that are affected by these different. Select groups are the ones that are having to pay a fee here. Uh, section thirty six four. Hella port. Now, I don't know anybody who owns a hella port, but if I did, they would have an annual inspection fee of a thousand dollars. Section thirty eight dash fifty seven, junkyard, annual permit fee of two hundred and fifty dollars. Section thirty eight dash ninety six, pawnbroker, secondhand dealers, annual fee of three hundred dollars. Section sixty five dash nineteenth, uh, parentheses C, wrecker, annual permit fee, two hundred and fifty dollars. Inspection fee of fifty dollars. Now. The thing with every one of these is they're required to do an annual registration or an annual renewal every year. That's the same thing that you're requiring of the people. That are having chickens. So my question is, why are they exempt from paying a fee when everybody else has to pay a fee? Now, it's been my experience that people who have to have buy-in on something usually take better care of what, whatever it is they're buying into. So. I personally think that there needs to be an annual fee. At least to cover the cost of code enforcement doing an inspection. And any administrative fees that maybe involves such as send a letter out or whatever. Just off top of my head, I'm not saying we need to. Try to offset the national debt here, but, uh. I think a reasonable amount would be probably maybe thirty dollars. I don't think that's unreasonable and it kind of comes in line with some of the other permit fees that we have here already, uh, in the city Lamar. So I think it's, the council really needs to consider doing a fee. For this. The other thing is the number of chickens. To me, I think twenty five chickens is kind of excessive. And I went out on the internet and I did a little research. And I found out that chickens lay from five to six eggs a week. Some. One side I went to said they lay seven to eight eggs a week. But let's just take five eggs a week. If you have twenty five chickens and they lay five eggs a week, that's a hundred and twenty five eggs a week. That's over ten dozen eggs. I don't know most normal families that can eat ten dozen eggs a week. So my question is, what's happening to all these excess eggs? Now, I know when this was such a big issue on Facebook, there were some people out there who own chickens. Who stated that they actually sold these eggs. Matter of fact, they stated they sold some to city employees. So. My question here is. Is this a business? And if it is a business, it have to be. There's a lot, there's a lot of questions coming up here. Well, ma- maybe city council can explain these to me.
Absolutely not. We cannot explain anything we know. Thing about people selling eggs and people buying eggs other than Walmart, A B, or any like.
All right, well. I, I really think this ordinance needs to be. Go back to the draft stage because that's a lot of work that still needs to be done on it. And, uh. And I don't know, maybe you need to set up a, a committee to, to review all this and, and, and then gather information from the citizens. See what they can come up with to you. Now, you asking everybody else, well, to give up. First, like fifty feet on the distance is reasonable. I know that's gonna put some people out of their, lose their chickens. But right now you have an ordinance that states a hundred feet and people are blah. They have chickens anyway. So if you do that to 25 feet, how many more are going to break that distance? That's all I have.
You laid it on us heavy, David. I mean, we, what are we to do now? I'm teasing. Excellent presentation. Thank you for that. Uh, I believe before, before Mr. Lowry, I believe there is someone on, uh, uh, Ms. Earl, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
So I've been watching this and we live next door to someone who does have chickens. Um, a couple of streets over, people have chickens. Something that's really not being talked about a lot is the fact that, you know, there are some houses that are really close. My neighbor behind me, their house is right at 25 feet from my bedroom. So we need to think about the noise aspect of it because there have been many mornings that I've gone outside to enjoy my yard and it sounded like the chickens were getting attacked. Doesn't make for a very pleasant Saturday morning when you're trying to, you know, enjoy the beautiful day, listening to all these chickens. That's the first issue. Then you're going to have the issue of anybody who owns a dog with these chickens coming near fences and things like that. Then you're going to have neighbors going at it because they're upset about dogs barking. So there's, you're going to have another noise issue. More, you know, calling out the police, filing more ordinance issues, you know, nuisance noise. Then the biggest thing for us that me and another neighbor have had an issue with, and we've spoken about it before, is a neighbor who owns the chickens does not maintain their chicken coop. This spring, we had so many rats. It was disgusting. We had to, um, put a barrier around the bottom of our shed to keep them out because they, I mean, you turn on the light and you can see them running. So the ordinance needs to be absolutely clear on what the rules are. If you give people too much of a gray area, then there's not going to be anything for code to enforce, which is obviously not happening to begin with. We cannot give any wiggle room. I understand people have the chickens for food. That's fine, but we have to have some good, clear boundaries to not only respect that they want to have chickens in their yard for their household, but also respect their neighbors and everybody else around them. I think the chicken run to me is a great idea because you can at least contain them to a specific area. You're not, more than likely not going to have them running up and down someone's fence line, making dogs go crazy. You know, and then I like the fact of doing the inspections because, like I said, our neighbors not maintaining theirs. They go out and they just throw feed everywhere. So it's a feeding frenzy for all kinds of critters. And that house is probably 50 feet from us and we're dealing with a rat issue from them. So, I mean, there needs to be clear rules with this. So everybody is respected and everybody's wishes are respected. That's all I got.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Earl?
Yes.
What would you give up if you had to?
I certainly would not allow 25 feet. Um, our houses are too close. Um, you know, you have a lot of people in this family, I mean, not in this family, in this community, including ours, where people work shift work. Um, you know, you have to be respectful of, you know, other people's schedules, you know, and being respectful of your neighbors. Yeah, I mean, me and some of the other neighbors, we've had work done in our house. They've had work done on theirs. We've always tried to be respectful of the fact that, you know, we know we have varying schedules and to try to keep noise down to a minimum. But there's been several times I've been outside that the chickens are, sound like, you know, I don't know if it's a cat or a dog or whatever, getting into their coop and I mean, it's not a very pleasant sound to listen to on a Saturday morning with your cup of coffee. I mean, we've been here for 20 years. I don't want to, you know, I didn't move to a farm city. I mean, I hate to say it that way, but I didn't move to a farm area.
Sure. So your, your compromise would be the chicken run then?
I think the chicken run.
Okay.
And I definitely do not, I think it needs to be more than 25 feet. I think it needs to be 25 feet away from the other person's property because there are some houses that have great distances between them. And then you've got a lot of houses, especially in some of the newer neighborhoods, that you could hand someone a beer out your bedroom window. You know, I mean, you just have to be respectful of your neighbors in all types of ways.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
It's a lottery. And then we'll, we'll come back to council for final, uh, direction for Gus.
Couple of things. 18 eggs, somebody was talking about 25 eggs a day. I used to be a bodybuilder and I look like an out, but 18 eggs a day, um, when I was doing pilot, it was nothing to eat. Permitting, tying it to government, creating more of a nuisance, uh, more, it's just, our court systems don't need that. Also, he's on a fixed income. I mean, people don't need that. The rooster thing, I didn't touch on that and ducks unless we got ponds or something or rivers or lakes or something that I don't know about here. I don't see a, a point in ducks being here, but uh, again, it's, you know, their property, but uh, in the event that you are fined, I'm going to give you my card and I'll take care of the fine for you since you are on a fixed income and that's it.
All right. Thank you. All right, council. What are we thinking?
As I said before, the 50, you know, when we first said this, we, I, in the research that I had done, I said that the 50 feet was the best practice that I had found. And talking to some of city mayors who do have clean cities where there is a standard. The average was 50 and, and we are growing city. We're going to have some growing pains and these are some of those growing pains. Uh, unfortunately, Mr. Lowry, um, every city has to have rules to make sure that people can get along. And sometimes when people don't uh, follow those rules, you have to have some type of system in place or government in place to enforce that so people can live in harmony. And that's why we have ordinance and that's why we, we have that. And it would be great to live in a world where there were no rules. But unfortunately, humanity calls for us to have order. And when you don't have order, you have chaos. And so what we're trying to do, uh, and let me just ask Kathleen, Kathleen, out of one, one in 10, how many out of one in 10 residents you believe even possess chickens? One in 10?
I, I couldn't even tell you.
Okay.
I chicken orange is animal lost off the door is is complaint case.
Okay.
We don't go out and do not, we cannot go out and hunt.
Right.
We see them, we try to locate where they live, but other than that, we don't know how many are out here. We get told several times a day, oh, there's some over here and some over here and some over here.
But, but if we do have a system in place where people have to register and there's a permit process, then that gives us a level of being able to inspect and to actually know. Because the, the unfortunate part of this is that most of the people that are coming to the council, they're excellent chicken coop, that they keep great, great areas. But it's the ones that don't comply. And that is why, Mr. Lowry, we are here. Um, and to the other ones on the call, that is why we have to have a system in place so that we can be fair, right? And so I agree with the permit, having a permit, having an annual inspection, having a cost with that. Affordable cost, of course. Um, but we do have to have a system in place to make sure that people are being compliant. That, that's what I think. I, you know, uh, I, I'm a dog lover. My husband loves animals, period, sub snakes. But he, he's been watching this debate and we have too. And I've listened to the ADHD concerns that you had. I told, as a teacher, I get that. That is calming for children. But at the same time, we've got to make sure that it's not a nuisance. And so I think the, the permit that, and thank you, David, for bringing what you said, uh, uh, the permit, the inspections, the annual inspections, and then I'm, I, I would be, what I would give up is a 50 feet to go with the, with the 50 feet. Because that's what cities that are best practiced, the cities that are clean, that's where they go for, for 50, 50 foot.
Thank you, Kim. Casey, you want in on this or you're going to let it go?
I'll, I'll keep my comments really brief because obviously we're not passing anything tonight. We're, we're putting some notes in and asking us to, just to, to stir the pot again for us at least one more time. Um, but I did want to, well, first I want to be clear, is it kosher for me to respond to any of the questions during this time? Was this technically?
Sure.
Okay. So I didn't want David to feel like he just put his questions out into the ether. I, I, I agree. I think we all agreed, like, the inspection, having a registration and, and a, and an ability to inspect is, is a really, is a very important thing. Uh, I think David's question about why are we not charging is a very relevant question. For me, and I think even in our early discussions, we, I think we all did agree, like, a small fee could be appropriate. But for me, the reason why it should be a very small fee and why I was inclined to say, let's make it free, was that this particular idea of chicken ownership really falls into that category of where it's, it's both an element of food access and pet ownership. Right? So we don't charge people to have pets. We don't have pet permits for dogs and cats. And also, I don't believe it's right for the city to restrict a person's ability to increase their own food security, which I firmly believe owning chickens is for a lot of people. And since it intersects between those two categories, that's why I thought like, let's not charge it, right? We want a way to keep tabs. Cause like Kim said, for people who are not good owners and good stewards of their animals, we want a way to be able to say, well, you can't keep them anymore. Um, but on that issue, that's, that's certainly not something that is the most important to me, as long as it was a very nominal fee. Um, and I do believe a lot of the people that have come and spoke to us in the last several times have even said they were willing to do that too. I, I had a question for Kathleen to help us with giving direction to Gus. Again, to David's point about crowing hens. Because I think we could get in the weeds really quickly here, which I would really like for us not to any further. But um, I agree, there should be some provision in this ordinance that we pass that allows for if somebody has a hen that crows all the time and is basically indistinguishable from a rooster, there should be a way for a neighbor to request that that hen goes away. Um, I wonder, do we, what's our language, Kathleen, around barking dogs and the way that you report?
Kathleen, you're going to have to approach. She can't hear you.
Yeah, I can't hear you. And I want to.
She's approaching, Casey.
I want to see the back of your head. Um, because one thing I'm concerned about with the suggested language that you suggested, David, suggested, suggested, um, was that a term like annoying is very subjective. Um, and also in my experience with keeping hens and keeping flocks that were, you know, small flocks, all the way to several hundred flocks. It's, it's usually like you have a hen or two that randomly crow. It's, and you know, you might, we, I've ended up with hens that, you know, felt really strongly about their identity and crowed all the time. And I think that would be an example of, okay, there needs to be a way to get rid of that hen because that's disruptive to your neighbors. But if a hen randomly crows and then never crows again, that doesn't seem that dissimilar to me. And in fact, I think it's exactly the same as if you have a dog that gets really riled up because something strange happens and it's a one-off. I, I don't see there being any difference between the sounds of a noisy hen that crows versus really disruptive dog barking. And how do we deal with dog barking complaints?
Okay. It's under the public nuisance ordinance.
Right.
The dog barking. It says, any animal kept on premises and not under control by loud and unusual barking, whining, or howling in an excessive, continuous, and untimely fashion in which the peace and quiet of the neighborhood and occupants of the adjacent premises are disturbed. This is supposed to be enforced by the police department. Now, it doesn't tell you how many decibels or all that. I think it's subjected to what that person's sensitivities are.
Sorry.
I mean, I guess.
Yes, it, it would be, it would be, it is subjective based on the officer who responds and the complaining neighbor.
Hmm. Okay. Okay. Well, I would say that's my suggestion for giving direction is that I think we should keep in mind that let's build in a way for if, I, I don't know if maybe someone can document it, like, you know, this hen has been crowing every day for the past week, you know, or except if they can record it or whenever and provide that. I, I don't know. Maybe that's too microscopic.
Yeah, we have asked people that have complained about roosters, please record them because when we go,
Right.
we don't hear.
Right.
So we asked them, please record it for us.
Yeah.
I can give you an example. When I was on patrol as a police officer for the city, we get barking dog calls. And we would go to these homes and the dogs may be barking excessively. But there was no general loud level or anything other than the annoyance to that person, which would have annoyed me too. But, you know, if we get there and they're not barking, you know, you know, that's, it's, that's the difficulty in the situation. I don't know how you could specify it.
Okay. Well, I'm not quite sure either, but that's my, thank you, Kathleen. And that's my suggestion is that maybe there's some language in there around documenting. It's so that it's not just, this is annoying to me.
I didn't understand. I didn't realize that roosters could, would crow all the time, anytime. They're not on a set time schedule.
Right. It's not like the storybook version where they only crow in the very early morning. I mean, roosters can crow. And like I said, hens can crow. It's not that they will crow and there's not like a certain species will crow. It's like they just can. Um, and so I want us to be cognizant of that. So I think David was right to build in a way where if someone has a legitimate complaint because a hen is crowing all the time, it should be removed. Um, okay. Uh, and then I just wanted to say that, you know, it's sound, there's a, you know, I, mayor, I appreciate you asking the people who are, who were able to give feedback tonight about, you know, what would be their element of compromise. Um, I just want to say again that I think um, the idea, so a chicken run, I think once and for all, a chicken run is just an enclosed outdoor space. I think that we should remove in our definition that it requires a roof. And I think that we should remove that it's six feet in height. I think if we're going to put a foot requirement, I think it should be four feet high. My, my ba, my base reason for that is that like poultry netting that you buy, that's mobile poultry netting, that usually is like electrified, so, and solar powered or whatever, that, that a lot of that can be used in small operations or large operate, small backyard flocks or in big, you know, commercial operations, they're, the standard is four feet high. And that's general, that's agreed upon as definitely sufficient to keep chickens from flying out. Yes, can they? Of course. But generally they will not. Um, and so I think, I think we need, if, if the coop is where we end up, or I'm sorry, if having a chicken run ends up being the main point of compromise, um, for me, that's, that would be my sticking points is we need to make that, that chicken run accessible to have more people to build so that it's not like this whole other, like, you know, Taj Mahal situation. It needs to be easy to create and easy to maintain. I still really do believe that owning chickens is very akin to owning dogs, except that it increases your food security. And so I believe that we should consider eliminating the property line requirement completely. Um, and allowing someone's fenced in backyard, as long as it is completely enclosed, to be the chicken run as well, as long as it's four feet high. Um, because I, I fully understand these, these arguments about, you know, they might rile up the neighbor's animals or whatever. But that's the same argument you could give for someone owning a dog or a cat. I, it's no different, in my opinion. Um, the biggest concerns are being able to give co-compliance and ability to enforce if someone is not taking care of their chickens, like Kim said, if they have an uns. The biggest concerns are being able to give co-compliance an ability to enforce if someone is not taking care of their chickens, like Kim said, if they have an unsanitary condition. If they are causing constant disruption. Um, and if their chickens are getting out all the time. So as long as we have rules that give those parameters, then I think we should allow people to have as much freedom as possible in their own home and their own property. To have those chickens. And the last thing I'll say is. I like fully didn't expect anyone to go with twenty-five chickens. But I did want to say, you know, we talked last time and we realized how many people, the, the varying sizes of lots, right, in our, in our, in our, our city, right? And so some, as Ms. Earl pointed out, really small lots, right? Uh, which is the reason why I do not think we should have the hundred feet from the nearest dwelling, because that completely eliminates someone from having chickens. But at the same time, we have some really large lots. So if people want to have a few more chickens. As long as they're able to accommodate the increased square footage required to keep those chickens in a healthy and sanitary way. I think we should allow them to have more than ten. As long as they're not turning it into a business, which we know is another thing we have to talk about down the road. That's all I got for now.
Yes ma'am. Thank you. Michael?
Uh, one thing I noticed while we're doing, while we're discussing. Under the permit requirements, there's nothing that states what if someone doesn't register their chickens? There's, and we, and co-compliance just stumbles across them or gets a complaint about them and finds out, guess what? They're not registered. So, I mean, they really can't, I mean, there should be something that specifies it. And maybe even the severity of. Removal of the chickens because you failed to register them. Because they're not following the rules. So guess what? You're held accountable. Get rid of your chickens. But I noticed that's not in there. Unlike Casey, I, I think ten chickens or ten hens is enough. I mean, because I don't foresee everybody, like they said, eight or eight eggs each per week, five to eight eggs. Okay, five to six on the low side. Okay, so that's still fifty eggs a week. My family doesn't need to eat fifty eggs and I got a large family. But, I mean, I'm not a bodybuilder either, though.
I think it's, I do think it's pertinent to say that that average is, can vary wildly. There are months at a time when chickens won't lay eggs at all. Or, or they'll lay one a week, depending on what's going on in the season. So, you know, it's important to remember that, but the end.
I mean, but yeah, I mean, I think ten might, would be appropriate for, if we're in the country, I could see that. I could see twenty-five or a hundred. That's fine, but I mean, we're still in an urban environment. So, I mean, ten, I think is a good compromise. I'd even, if we imposed the chicken run. I mean. I would be apt to just getting rid of the, the requirement as far as the distance, if they're in the run. No free range whatsoever, though. And if it's a free range. Then they're in violation. I mean. I, I would be more than willing to compromise on that. As long as they are in that run. So, um, that's the only other. Things that I have, uh. I'd like to add.
Thank you, Michael. Mayor Protem?
Well, thanks for your patience and it's been enjoyable listening to all these opinions. Uh, I don't want to. I, I believe we're looking at two. Two elements to this. One is the input that we've heard from our residents, our, our chicken constituents. Those that are, that are engaged in having the, the chickens in their properties. And then the second element of this is going to be fine tuning the rules, Gus, coming back. So there's two elements to this. Having said that, and I don't want to go, there's some items that are lacking. We have to have language, and this speaks to the second, on the rules, but we're not, if we pass an ordinance, when and if. I have to make it very, very clear that this is not going to permit you to have chickens if your deed restrictions. Are in place that do not permit you to have that. Uh, this is not going to permit you to have chickens in a planned community. Such as on the West End, in Omega Bay, for example, as well too, um, in Salt Grass, uh, those with HOA communities. So I want to make that clear. There's have to be language, uh, that we, we make that clear. Having said all that, Mr. Mayor, I just move that we table this. Uh, I think that, and I would also ask this. That the community needs to come together one last time in a facilitated discussion. A facilitated discussion, kind of along with David Pennington was suggesting, perhaps a committee. That we just have one final discussion, get everybody in the room, we're all adults. Uh, let's put together a, a workable plan. I think I've heard a lot of elements here of, um, that will work. And, um, and as part of that, then I also want to make this comment is that I do not, even though sometimes. This is the lesson that I've learned here being on council. We do not have this endless pot of money. Kathleen is already working and the whole department out there dealing with a situation on a very limited staff. What's the staff? Two, three? I think three. Okay, one, Kathleen and herself, two people. We don't have to have these unfunded mandates. Kind of like what Austin is sending down to us, unfunded mandates. So anything that we do, let's be respectful of our, of our. City employees that will assume responsibility for many of the things that we incorporate in this, in this ordinance. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I, I move that we table this item. My motion.
Great discussion before you, before you get to your motion. Great discussion tonight. I do, uh, believe that we need to have a workshop, uh, to get this done and get it done finally. Perhaps, uh, our next regularly scheduled meeting, uh, we might come in, uh, Gus and, and Chase, we might, we might arrive a little early.
I, I don't, I'm, I'm, you know, workshop is a, what I'm really thinking about, Mr. Mayor, is. Let's let every, the community come together in a facilitated discussion. Where everything is written down there and out of that, it's presented to us here. Because I'm not a chicken person, other than of my grandfather's farm many years, and my uncle and aunt were probably know more about chickens than I do. I just remember the big rat snakes that were in the chicken hens and scaring the heck out of us as young kids. That's all I remember. And, and eating the eggs, of course. So, and my grandmother killing the chickens as well, too, right?
A lot of memories, Joe. That's a lot of memories.
I'm sorry. So, so anyway, I just, I'm just, I just, just let, let those that are interested. And have a vested interest in this, let's all convene in a meeting, a facilitated discussion. Not this concept of a workshop, which intimidates some people. And then we have, we scribe the information and that report is presented to us here as saying, these are the things that we've already. Have reached a consensus on council. And then we can add, add our i's and cross our t's.
Sure. And, and so what I was gonna say, Mayor Protem, was, was a workshop, uh, not like the normal workshop. But where we would all get together, council and citizens in one room. And we would discuss amongst each other what those issues are as it relates to this ordinance. So that that night, we can move forward with an ordinance that, that we all would not necessarily be happy with. But that we all would agree upon. And so that looks like rolling our sleeves up maybe two hours before our council meeting. And, and trying to get to the heart of this issue without microphones, uh, without any decorum. Without any other element other than people working together. Because at the end of the day, right? This is about compromise. We live in a community. Uh, and, and part of that word is unity. And so we have to find a way to get on the same page. And that means nobody will get everything that they want. But that doesn't happen anywhere in America, right? It doesn't happen, y, you can't even go to the grocery store, and I'm not gonna be long. You can't even go to the grocery store and get everything you want. Right? And so we have to learn and relearn the element of compromise. The city's filled with all different sorts of people that have all different backgrounds, different histories, uh, different opinions and different understandings. And we have to find a way. To, to find common ground on this issue. Because we have been discussing this for the entire summer. Uh, and something that seems so simple, though very important to people. Is, is still continuing to be an issue for this council. So what I would propose, if you're willing, council. Those of you that are listening and those of you that are in attendance, I would propose that perhaps. Uh, four o'clock before our next regularly scheduled meeting, Chase. That we would convene, uh, in this room or maybe perhaps in the community room. Uh, it'll have to be a posted meeting because council will be there and we'll be discussing city business. Uh, but that we would remove the microphones and all of the other things and we would get together as neighbors. And find a way forward. Again, it won't be everything that we all want, but perhaps it will be something that we all can live with. Uh, I believe in the chicken run, from what I'm hearing, that's important to people. I believe in the, uh, non-permeated, uh, food storage. Uh, what would I be willing to give up? To me, I thought perhaps you would, you should only have six chickens, but then I don't, I don't have chickens. And so I don't know. And so I would be willing to give up a number. Uh, I don't know that I would go as high as twenty-five. Uh, but I would be willing to give up a number, uh, as my sacrifice and that's my compromise. Uh, but I do feel strongly about runs and I do, uh, feel strongly. About non-permeated food storage. So Gus, I think that you have enough to move forward. I will entertain your motion, Mayor Protem.
I'll second.
There is no discussion on the table. All those in favor? Any opposed? When we do this, Chase, uh, and I'm saying this also to you, Kiera. Let's please make sure that we are, uh, letting the public know that we will have a meeting. Four o'clock. And I know that might be difficult for some. I, I truly apologize. But we, we need to have a meeting to be able to, to, to get to the nuts and bolts of what we're trying to do. Four o'clock, uh, the second Monday in October.
And let me, I, I would, I would like to say something to this. As, as the newest member of council. It's very concerning to me that we are still tabling and tabling and tabling. We got a lot of information tonight. Perhaps not to vote on it, but this is an issue that causes unnecessary contention. And the longer that this is unresolved. It gives, it, 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 it creates a cloud of sorts, because some people are looking for something to be negative about. And one, and one thing that we have to do as council is to protect our city. And, and make decisions, period. And I just kind of think we're just kind of passing it down the, the world a little bit and keep passing it down the road when. I, I, I'm just, I'm a, I have a little concern about that. I do pray that this issue is resolved this year.
Uh, uh, you're right. You are right, councilwoman. Uh, and I, I think that it will be resolved this year. In fact, I know that it will be. Anything else? All right, ladies and gentlemen, let's move now to item. B, uh, this is discussion possible action regarding adopting resolution number letter R dash two zero two one. Dash zero zero two one. Uh, authorizing the interim city manager to execute the contract appointing Carrie with an I. With a Y? Carrie with a Y, we got it right. Pettijohn as municipal court judge. Before we do this, uh, I would like to introduce to you all our new municipal court judge. Her name is Carrie Pettijohn. Ms. Pettijohn, would you stand up, please? This is our new municipal court judge. She was unanimous, unanimously, uh. Selected, thank you, uh, by this, uh, city council and we look forward to working with you, Ms. Pettijohn. Would you, would you like to have words? I mean, you don't have to, it's up to you. Not this time? All right, we're gonna speed on through. Counsel, what's your pleasure? I'm entertaining a motion.
So moved.
I second.
Any discussion? Hearing and we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Item seven C, discussion possible action regarding the effectiveness of request tracker. And the enforcement of city codes and provide staff with direction. Uh, council member Carlson. Council member Carlson actually, uh, placed the item on the agenda for the enforcement of city codes. I asked to add to his item, uh, with a discussion about the effectiveness of request tracker. So, uh, Ms. Vence Durvan, would you approach? Mr. Carlson?
Yes, sir. Thank you for sticking around. I know, uh. I know we talked a long time.
Business, I just appreciate you keep working through this.
So, um, could you let the council and the citizens know if someone has a complaint? Because all of our ordinance are complaint driven, correct?
All of our ordinances are complaint driven? No.
Okay. Okay, so take, walk us through when you either find something or someone complains, it's a complaint, but either one. What's the process?
As it pertains to request tracker?
Um, just in general. First off, in general.
If we find a code violation or a building violation, um, on view, as in when we're patrolling. We research, find out who owns a property, we open a case on it in Smart Gov. And, um, depending on what the violation is. Is stipulates what our next, um, duty is, which most of the time, it's make a formal notice by certified mail. Of, of the violation. We actually try to be a little more courteous. Show a little more courtesy for the, for the homeowners and the citizens by maybe leaving them a door hanger or a little flyer on their door, please call us. So we can talk to you about your violation. If it's a serious health issue, life, safety, health issue. Then we do follow exactly what the law and the ordinance is saying. We send certified letters. And they have a certain time to respond. If they don't respond, we send a second letter. And if they don't, we have the choice then to either abate it, the city can abate it, or we issue citations. And depending on the seriousness of it. Is, how, how we react. If it's an, if it's someone calls in, which they can call into the city receptionist and she fills out a form, she'll put them in request tracker. Sometimes they just pick up the form and they fill it out themselves and they're emailed to us. A lot of them call us directly and report things, or they'll call other departments. And other departments will transfer them to us. And then we follow the same process depending on the violation. If somebody, if we don't see it ourselves, we have to go out and investigate. We take, we document it with pictures. We document it with investigations of talking to neighbors or other people, like that drive by and see our trucks there, we'll ask them questions. So it's, and then we just follow the process for the violation. Most of the time it's educating the citizen. They just didn't know. So we try to teach them, okay, well, you're doing this, this is a violation of this ordinance. And we're gonna send you a letter, but you've got ten days from receipt of that letter to go ahead and abate this violation. So.
And I, I know there's two of you now versus the standard, what, four? Four in your department? There's four in your department generally, right?
Yes, I've got.
I know you're down to two.
I'm down to myself and Officer Phillips because one of my officers had surgery and she will be out through October. And I have another one that just went out for, um, another health issue, not COVID. But.
Gotcha. Okay.
So.
So, yeah, just, I want to.
But normally it's four.
Good. Okay. I want to make sure we didn't have an open hole there somewhere.
No, sir.
Like a vacancy. Okay. So with request, request tracker, that's something the citizens can do, correct? That can get online and do?
Yes, sir, on the city website.
Okay, on the city website. Okay. Now, when you get something from request tracker. Do you go back in and put like follow-up notes or anything? So there's closure for that citizen that reported it? Or how is that? Or how is that closed out?
That sometimes we will get complaints and I will enter them into SmartGov so that those, the person can get an update on what, what their concerns are. Most of the time they're called in, the city receptionist will enter it into, to the request tracker program. Then it's, it's not assigned to a department until there's a certain criteria of where it should go. Most of the time I just go in and check them. And I'll assign it to code enforcement if it comes to us or I'll send it to the police department or the public works, whatever. If it's us, I could send, assign it to code enforcement slash development services. And then I assign it to the district code officer where that address is to do the investigation. At that point, there's an email that's generated, goes back to the said email that's on request tracker.
Okay.
I sometimes add my name, my email on there so that I can track them also. Or I'll add, um, sometimes I have added the city manager's name or others that could be concerned about the same complaint. And by doing this, when somebody makes, we put it in request tracker, that person gets an email every single time we put something in. So we go, it shows we assigned it to this district code officer. And the reason we signed it to that district because it's, that's their address is in that district. They get an email that I did that. So the officer goes out and investigates, comes back, puts notes in there along with opening a SmartGov case and all the documentation for that, goes and does the same thing into request tracker.
Okay.
Then that person gets another email saying, oh, they just put more details in here, this is what they did. And it goes on and on and on until we close the case. Even when we close the request tracker, there's a reason put in there why and they get that email. And that's why we like it so much is because it constantly sends them an email where we can't take their complaint and call them up every day and say, hey, we did this. Because we may have a hundred places we gotta look that day. We can't send them a letter and email every day because we're doing all these other cases. So, but with request tracker, they automatically get it and they know what we're doing. My policy, my personal policy in my department is you must update it every, every three days. Now, there's some on there right now that have been on there for a long time. But they have been updated with what we can update them with. One of them is about some chickens. Currently, there are no updates because we're waiting for the court date. Other than that, they're updated every three days. And people call and thank us for that. Or they'll email us just on our city emails and say, hey, thank you, I got your email from request tracker.
So the citizens are continually updated.
Oh, and just every, every time we put anything in there, they're updated.
Okay.
I think the biggest thing is we need to market and promote.
We do, we, we, I even tell them, they'll say, well, I don't know how to do that. And I said, I'll tell you this, give me your email, I'll submit it for you. You're gonna get an email to go in and set a password up so that you can go in and change it or add things or whatever you want to do. I think it's a password, I'm not sure. And then from then on, they start using it.
Right.
And they really like it.
Right, and, and what, what, and I'm sorry.
No, you're good.
Most young people do apps, they don't do websites. So we really need to start pushing our website. And that, especially when we have new people move in and, you know, even when our school system, so for the most part, the, the average citizen has no clue about the request tracker. But with the app, and we tell people to start downloading our city app, then the app begin to, will begin to notify as well. And I think once we do that, that'll make your job easier too.
Well, I think there's a big, there's a thing on there that says complaints are concerned and they can click on it, right? And then it walks them through everything. Now, there are some older citizens that don't have internet and don't want to deal with it. They don't have to.
Yeah.
They'll call us.
Yeah.
Or, or they'll, they'll call city hall. And then the receptionist will call us and say, hey, this person, you know, can you give them a call? Or they had this complaint, but they don't have email or anything. So then we have the address, we just go out there.
But you like it, you like requests.
Oh, I do, I do. I do it just because it, it saves a lot of our time because everyone wants to find out, oh, you ran out there just today to go do this, did you? What'd you do? Well, you know, sometimes we can't get there that same day. But at least we can put it in there and put a note in there, yes, this person is assigned to this case. So you know, there's an officer that's gonna go investigate it. You're not just thinking, I just made this complaint, nothing's gonna happen.
Now, some of that kind of.
Messers, it's kind of really too.
Some that troubled me and still troubles me is back in March, April timeframe, uh, actually maybe July, June, July timeframe, went to, with the mayor to one of his hearings out on the D, District D side. And there is a residence that there was a bunch of, it was definitely an abandoned building, but there was big old couches there. And back in September, two weeks ago, when we were doing the cleanup, those couches were still there. So that kind of troubles me is they've been out there for at least two, three months, minimum.
Where's that?
That is off of MLK and Fifth, I believe, Fifth, Fifth Street. Um, it's a, it's a red barn type building, like a red garage, red barn. And there's couches by the cemetery. Across the street from the cemetery.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, they've been out there for.
Last picture I saw that red, because that's just, there's like storage buildings there next to those apartments.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, those couches have been out there a few, few months.
You talking about the couches?
Yeah, yeah. As of September 12th, there was, September 11th, they were still there.
I didn't, they put some more couches out there?
Yep, they're still.
Uh, because the last pictures I saw of that building, I think you shouldn't tell me there were no couches.
Yeah, as of September 11th, they're.
We'll call over those couches, Kim.
Nah, Mayor, I don't. Bought two pictures and they got them removed again.
And then another, I mean, there's a whole bunch of trailers that are.
Yes.
Yes, those are definitely.
Yeah, the old acres mobile home park.
Right, those are, yeah.
Um, and what troubles me is, A, they look bad.
Sure.
For the city. B, there's trash, so it's creating a health hazard. Um, there's like trash outside. If, my understanding is there's some kind of legal issue going on with those? But if, if there is, there needs to be, why can't we put a lien on that property until that's?
We just, which we actually did just put a lien on that property because we just picked up a major pile of trash, which I think was right on the corner. And we put a lien on the property, it was like fourteen hundred dollars, that's how much it was.
Okay.
Right now, the, the man that owned that property for all these years died. And his property is left to his daughters and a son who's developmentally challenged. Therein lies the problem. Where his daughters can handle it other than all the stuff that he left them dealing with it. It is in probate. We check it because we want to tear it and destroy it. We want to demolish it all. But we can't do anything until the probate judge makes a decision. And what that decision is, is that Casey Hill will be the one who will be the administrator of the, that property in particular.
Okay, the estate?
Yes, so we're not ignoring it. But legally, we just can't go in there and destroy property that the judge has not given to you.
Let me ask you this, maybe you know, but Gus is listening and I know that Gus knows this definitely. If, if there are properties that are in probate, are they still allowed to generate income?
That, I don't know that question. I have no idea. I mean, because this is, this is a messy situation with this.
Yeah, um, assuming that an executor had been appointed, uh, which will, will normally happen within 30 days of the death, the executor will operate the estate, operate the assets of the estate and any money would be in the care, custody and control of the executor. And as Kathleen has said, um, the city is more than able to file a lien against that property that would, uh, be collected most likely once the property is sold.
Right, normally, normally, yes.
And, and that's the question I, that I have because if there, if, if, if it's a nuisance and a public safety issue, even if it's in probate, we, it, and if it's a safety hazard for children and that particular.
Okay.
It, you know, is there a way where we can clean that whole property off if it's a safety hazard and a nu? Because what if somebody gets hurt? Now that's the property. I'm just, I'm like, let me ask Gus. If it's a public safety hazard.
Yes.
We can.
Uh, probably, yes, yes. Um, the, the, the probate, the issue of it being in probate is more of an issue of, I, I think what is, we can clean it up and, but we have to keep cleaning it up. The issue with it being in probate is, once an executor is appointed, we have somebody we can deal with who, to try to bring the property in compliance so that Kathleen's not having to deal with it.
This, this issue I'm having, this happens in every city. But every city's deal with, Lake City is old and new. But you don't see properties like this in Lake City. Because they clean it up. And I'm like, why can't we clean it up in the midst of it being in probate if it's a safety hazard for children? And that's how I came to our attention.
Can I add, there are, there are still, those trailers, a lot of them are still occupied. And some of them are owned by Casey Hill's father, some are owned by the people living in them and they rented the lot. If we go in and try to move to demolish it and clear their property, we have to provide somewhere for those people to go.
Okay.
And that means the city is gonna foot the bill to put them up somewhere, so.
No, there, there are other ways to do that through HUD. Because if it's a safety and, and, and safe, it's, it's a safe, it's a hazard issue, then HUD can come in and that, and that's just if my, my background would have been the Department of Public Housing. You may know a little bit about that when it comes to a Red Cross. Because it, because CPS could be called a lot of things because that, that place is unsafe. And nobody should be living.
Council directs me to do and that city attorney directs me to do.
And we don't know, I don't know, let, let's just explore that because.
You'll go hand in hand with me.
Yeah, I, 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 I know your role and you, and you got a role, I tell you, I, I, we, we and you are similar.
I want, I, I want that property, I've wanted that property gone since I came to work for the city in 1994. And it was left and it was left and it got worse and it got worse and it got worse. And right before he died, I was starting to move on it.
Right.
Because I could do, he was the owner.
Right, right.
And then he dies and it's okay, all right, hold up. Then COVID hits, which delayed it again for, for, for god knows how long. Probate court wouldn't even hear the case for so long.
Do we know if they have an executor or not?
No. As far as I know.
You mean, you mean, no, you know, you don't know? No, you don't know, okay.
Okay.
I haven't looked in the last three weeks, but I, I checked it the last time because I was going in.
Gus, could you check? We, we could check that, uh, what is this individual's name, the deceased?
Jay Hill was the, was he the?
J A Y.
J A Y.
Because if we don't pick up our trash, nobody will. I mean, I said that we don't pick up our trash, nobody.
And here's the other.
Well, we did, we went and picked a pile up because they were pushing some of it off and it finally got it and we took, we picked it up.
Right, I'm just talking about the, 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 the actual property, if it's not a, the code.
And, and here's the other thing with that, Kathleen. The reason that we moved toward, uh, the, the whole neighborhood light program that we started years ago, where we started demolishing homes in District A and District D, was because we deem those, those structures to be unsafe.
Yes, sir.
Myself and Carlson went out, uh, on the, uh, September 11th cleanup day and we turned the corner and we stood with two city employees in front of that backside, the side on Plum Street, and looked at all of those trailers. And none of them, except for maybe the one on the end, were occupied. But all of them were open to the public, right? And so that means that your, your, uh, drug user, your drug dealer, uh, that means persons that, that mean, uh, some of our young people and some of our, our women and some of our elderly harm and all other sorts of potential criminal activity go on, uh, potentially can go on in those, those trailers because they're open. At least, at least is there any way for us to secure those until we get through this process? So that, that those trailers aren't just open for any and all criminal activity?
I can do an emergency order secure and board up.
Well.
I just need to know who to serve it to.
Well, that, well, what we need, what we need you to do first is not listen to us because that's against the charter.
We just did that and go freeze, remember?
And we need to say that to Chase.
Yeah, so if, if.
Chase.
That's what the direction is.
Is that agreeable with you, Chase?
Yes, sir, we're gonna get with Gus tomorrow.
You think, Chase, we might be able to get this at least, at least boarded up and secured?
Gus tells me I can.
Okay. Okay. Good, good.
Also, like some of the properties, like across the street where it looks like a jungle, I'm sure that property belongs to somebody that it hasn't, it hasn't been mowed or cut in years.
Depends on which one you're talking about, there's a city easement there.
Okay, it's not the easement, it's an actual property.
There might, no, there is those, they're actually across from there, so. But I'm not sure which one you're talking about.
Yeah, there's, there's remnants of what used to be a home there. Um, it's not the easement.
Okay.
Right next to the, the nice looking house, right next to it.
Okay, I'll look it up tomorrow, I don't have my.
But that's not just. That's not the only thing though, but like throughout the whole city. It seems like a lot of these properties that there's no homes on, um, the properties, like the grass hasn't been cut in a while. The place that the refinery zone, their green space, those aren't kept up. I mean, that's, we're talking about chickens making the city look bad. I mean, this stuff makes the city look worse. I mean, worse than any other chicken unless it's a monster chicken. But I think, I mean, I think we need to put down a zero tolerance.
Yeah.
And, I mean, strictly, I know it's two of you, but.
It's not, it's not the number of employees that the problem is, but it's the process.
Right.
And yes, we're all, we're very aware of BP's properties.
Right.
Very aware. If you want to like see the chain of cases that we've had on just a few that we've actually got them to do something with. But when you're dealing with those kind of companies, it takes a while. And I can't write a citation to BP America. What, where's that gonna go? So if I can either get them to finally do it, which we finally found one person that we can contact and say, get them over here to mow your damn grass.
Right.
Okay, but it takes a while for us to get to that point with these people. We send letters, there's history, we've got, if you, anytime you want to come look at all these cases, we have cases on most of them. We have cases on, on probably some of these lots you're talking about. And there's probably some of the ones that the city maintains that are tall right now. Due to the rain and due to other circumstances that where he doesn't have any help because there's no COVID, it's all COVID. He can't get people to come. But he, he worked all weekend, worked on city parks and stuff, so there's some, our lots that are high. Trust me, we know, we keep up with them. But we still have to go through a process.
Right.
And when legally, I can't go to your house and say, oh, your grass is high, your neighbor doesn't like it, so I'm gonna go and cut your grass. I can't do that. It's private property, just like these lots that are abandoned by people that live in Las Vegas or somewhere. It's private property, so we have to follow what the ordinance says. And it's frustrating, but, but we have to. If not, we're gonna see my name and your name and your name on a lawsuit.
Yeah, I understand that. I mean, we gotta follow a procedure.
It took a long time just to get all the lots on the list that we do maintain right now.
But it just seems like, and I'm hearing from citizens, oh, well, code enforcement is selective enforcement, even down in Omega Bay. I guess there's a gentleman that poured concrete without a permit and was told, I mean, I, I guess a complaint was filed and was, nothing was done about it. I mean, I think we need to kind of adapt to zero tolerance and if someone pours concrete without a lot, a, a permit, we can go about the process of fixing it or finding them.
We did, we did.
Did you?
We did.
Okay.
We were alerted.
Okay.
We were alerted and we went out there that same day. We've also sent the city inspector out there to inspect what he poured. We've also been told by the HOA, they don't care what he does. They're gonna not, gonna approve anything he puts in front of them. So therein lies a whole lot of other things, but we went out there.
Right.
He's poured extra concrete out so he could park his boat trailer on it. I said, no, that's not gonna fly. But we do.
Okay.
We do. There's nothing selective about this code enforcement.
Okay, good.
Nothing.
Good, because I want to make sure that if it's good for one person, it's good for everybody.
Sir, if your grass is over 12 inches high, you're gonna get a letter.
I get them from my HOA all the time.
Oh, do you?
I do. I do.
They're meaner than we are.
Um, but that's, I mean, that's, most of my discuss- But that's, I mean, that's, most of my discussion is, I mean, just, we gotta adopt a zero tolerance and make sure we do the right thing and do the, follow the right procedures.
We, we do, we, we do everything we can do, but we, you know, there, there has to be a certain part of compromise when it comes to enforcing ordinances. It has to be a certain part of compassion. And you've got to educate people that don't even know. People don't know, they don't even know we have a chicken ordinance, they don't know, they don't know, oh, my grass can't be over twelve inches high? They don't know. So a lot of it is educating them also, instead of just bringing the hammer down on them. Because if you can educate one, you're educating five.
Well, I understand that, but if you educate them and they're still doing it.
Then they, then, then we bring the hammer down.
But, but Kathleen, let me, let me, let me, let me press a little bit on that.
Okay.
Um, I would think, and, and I'm not suggesting that you're not saying this, but I would think that the, the education and the compassion piece comes in with the municipal judge, right? I would think that it would be, uh, uh, like, like any other, like, like a peace officer. If, 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 if one violates Texas law, they go to jail. And then they, they have their day in court. And then the judge can then, in his or her discretion, provide lenience, right? Uh, and so I, I, I think about it in that way. I think I am in favor, I am strongly in favor of a zero tolerance policy uh, as it relates to code enforcement, uh, because code enforcement is akin to, or goes hand in hand with crime. When we have, uh, areas of our city, uh, that, that are, are, uh, not compliant with code, we find that those same areas are more conducive to crime, that's fact. That's fact all day long. Uh, we know that when, when, when people in our city are made to follow code or they're made to, to be held accountable for, for the fact that they did not follow code, we know that, that sends a message to our citizens and to those that visit our city, that Lamarck is a city that's governed by law, laws and ordinances, right? And, and I think, I think the message has to be consistent, if we wanna be a safe city, we have to be a clean city. We have to be an orderly city. We have to be an organized city. And that means that we have to enforce the code. And I'm not suggesting that anyone is or is not. What I'm saying tonight is that I am of the same mindset as, as Mr. Carlson. Perhaps we need to, uh, we need to pass, uh, a directive officially, uh, officially directing Chase to adopt a zero tolerance policy in our code enforcement. Uh, a- and I think that once we do that, we'll send a message to our community members that code violations won't be tolerated. And I am not talking about chickens, this is not about chickens. This is about just all sorts of code violations, whether it be high weed or grass or whatever the case may be. I get it. I think that if we do that and we make sure that the people understand that now we're moving into a zero tolerance policy, I think that the judge then would be able to be the one that would have leniency based on story, right? If your grass is high and you get a citation and you go to court and you say to Judge Pettijohn, I have been out of work for the last six months, then that's her job to decide whether or not there should be leniency. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir, but we don't, that's not a consideration we look.
I'm just giving you an example. Yeah, I'm just giving you an example.
You're not employed, that's not my problem, you need to mow your grass.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just giving you an example of, of, uh, I, I know that you're a compassionate person, I do, and I respect that. And, and, and I thank you for being that way. I'm simply saying that, that people are looking at our code enforcement department's compassion and, and, and they're using it and they're taking it for granted in many cases. And the biggest part of that is it's allowing for this idea that Lamarck will be a place that you can get away with breaking the rules. And it starts with high grass, but it ends with, uh, uh, drug manufacturing and delivery and sales. It, it starts with, with, uh, uh, let's say, issues of, uh, non-compliance within, chickens, let's use chickens again, just for the lack of, of, uh, uh, a better, a better route. And it, and it ends in, in gunfire. It, it, all of these things work together. They do, whether we understand that or not. The message that we send as a city goes far beyond those persons that are violating code and it really goes into the hearts and minds of the members of the community that then see code violations being, being, uh, unaddressed. And now we are having crime and so they're not addressing crime because we're not addressing code. It all, I promise you, it all works hand in hand, so I'm pushing for a zero tolerance policy. Casey, did you have something?
I, I think, I think it's something worthy of further discussion, honestly, cause I really see where you're coming from and I, you know, we keep hearing these comments about perceptions of unequal, you know, inequitable approaches to how things are enforced. And I, I honestly think, as others have said here, that a lot of that is just misunderstanding around how we're allowed to do things and how request tracker works and all those things, you know, I mean, we have a lot of education to do. I, I take a little bit of, I, if it was on my face, it was then, like, I've seen Kathleen show compassion to so many people throughout the city, but in particular in my district and in particular people who are, if they had, if there had been a zero tolerance policy and she had immediately cited them and they had gone to court, the kinds of, um, burden that would have put on people who are, you know, alone, very, very poor, have no support system, people who, specifically people who are shut-ins, right? People who have never left their house in years or very, very, very rarely. The kind of compassion I've seen the code enforcement department show individuals like that is not something that I would want to see really changed. Um, because they've been able to solve the issues that they saw during drive-in, you know, drive-arounds, I, I forget the term that you use, Kathleen, when you see it like onsite, right, when they're driving around, they're like, whoa, there's a major issue over here or we got a complaint from a neighbor and then they go to assess the situation and they realize there's a major social welfare situation here, right? That's something that I just want us to keep in mind as we continue this conversation around zero tolerance, cause I do think there's a way to have a middle ground there. I do think that we can have more of a zero tolerance policy around certain things, but also keep in mind that I, I'm very proud to have a code enforcement department that is very human, right? And considers people's context and, um, doesn't immediately send them to court. Cause for some people, that's really, really, really difficult. And, um, that's all I'll say, I don't have any, I, 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 I hear what you're saying, I, I look forward to us talking about that more.
Please don't take me using the word compassion as a weakness in my department.
I don't know.
I, I don't. Kathleen, I don't, I don't think that at all. I, I, I think that, I think that the council needs to give Chase clear direction on, on what we expect. That's the heart of, of, of my, my communication on this issue. We need to be clear with Chase on what we expect out of our code enforcement. It has nothing to do with you at all, right? All the officers that you work with, tremendous people, you're a tremendous person and, and I thank God for you all's service. This has to do with the council being able to provide direction to the manager so that he can direct you the way that the council chooses. And I don't know that Chase knows what we think. So tonight's about telling him what we think.
And, 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 and let me say this, there, there's a new Lamarck emergence. And all we're saying is, you got our support. Do the job. Are, there are parts of our city that have been neglected, neglected, not just by our own citizens, but by our city and business people that make money from us. And you can't do all that by yourself. It has to be a collaboration of our, but it starts with us as a city council to let the, him know, uh, Chase know that there's a new move. And we, we're tired of people trashing Lamarck with their words. We're tra- we're tired of citizens trashing their own city. And we're not having it anymore. It is, it is not acceptable and it's no longer the norm. And all we do, what we're trying to do is change the norms. We have made the abnormal normal in Lamarck. And when we went out for the September eleventh and council got to see some things, I've already seen it, you and I talk, we talk all the time about some of the stuff that, that's been here for so long, but you know, fresh eyes always bring new vision, you know? So I'm just the newest person. And I like to ride around, cause I absolutely love Lamarck. And I work, I ride in my district, I ride in they district, just to see what do we need to do to improve? You know, and there, and there's some, and, and I think what the mayor is just trying to say, you got our support. And not only that, but we're gonna go to a zero tolerance that, that we want, cause I, I do have issues, I've talked to Chase to say, I don't understand why my side of Lake Row look a hot mess and that side of Lake Row look great. That ain't right. But I know we're on our way to fixing that because we've got the four new people that's coming to cut the grass, do the easements, and I take videos and show, and y'all, and y'all are on the money, I love, y'all are on the money, Chase is on it. But it's gonna take time. And I think that, that, that's what he's, we, we're saying, let the judge have most of the compassion.
Oh, absolutely.
Right.
Absolutely.
And, but, but, but if we, cause we can't keep doing the same thing the same way and expect different results, this, this, that's, that's not gonna happen. Something has got to change and we can only change what's in our hands. And what's in our hands is we've gotta clean it up and be rigorous and intentional for about a good year to get some of this, like, like y'all did back in the day when y'all were, uh, demolishing all those programs. I mean, that made such a difference, a lot of the work you guys did, we see now with all the new homes that are coming up. And so you guys, we, you know what to do, we just, what we're saying is, you, we got your back.
And we demolished all those houses, that's why it stopped, because we did so many.
Yeah, yeah.
There weren't anymore.
Yeah.
And then we wanted to re- to repair them.
Right.
That's a Building Standards Commission decision.
Right.
Are we not doing the blight program anymore?
We, we, we are, but, but we have, we've demolished so many homes over the past ten years that, that she's probably looking for houses to deva- to, to demolish.
Three coming. But a lot of it was, were decisions were made for those homes to be repaired.
Yeah.
And by all they can, if, you know, the commission allows them to. Whatever, whatever the city council wants or Mr. Kerry wants, we will do. But just so you know, it, that all these things that you want citations written for, you can't write an, an instant citation, I still have to go through the process.
Absolutely.
So it's not gonna be us going out tomorrow and start writing citations, everybody with high grass.
Absolutely.
Not, that's not gonna happen, so.
Like I said, do the, do the right procedure, do, do it by the book, do it the right way. Um, and like, I may sound hypocritical, but if you wanna educate someone first time, I'm cool with that, cause I totally understand, some people are, they may not know. But you go back out the next week and there's the same issue, nail them. I mean, do the right procedure, do it by the book, do the right steps, but you educated them once.
Yeah. We have to, we have to clean our city up, there is no other way around it. We have to ki- clean our city up. Um, we, we can't, we can't rid ourselves of violent crime and, and then not, uh, clean up some of the code enforcement issues that we have. It, this has to be a mentality and it has to be a message that's sent, that's clear and concise to, to those that live within our city and those that decide that they wanna come to our city and harm our city. Um, the message has to be, uh, uh, bold to, to Ms. Yancey's point. Um, and we have to make sure that we are consistent. Um, let me ask you this. Do we have a backlog in our request tracker?
Not with code enforcement, I have fifteen open cases and I've closed thirteen hundred and five.
There are many people.
I think we've done more than any department in the city, to be honest with you.
There are many people that complain about, we get some of the biggest complaints, not, not about code violations, although we do. Uh, but we get big, uh, some of our biggest complaints about the failure of request tracker.
Okay, I'm, I'm.
Is that technology, though?
I, I don't know, I, I don't know.
I'm not from.
They, they're saying that they, they put it, what, well, let me tell you what, what I hear.
Okay.
We've put it in, but we haven't gotten email back. We haven't gotten any word back, we put it in, uh, and it's still in the same place that it was in. You know, there, there hadn't been any movement on it, there are no updates that are being given for it. So people are saying they're entering their complaints or their concerns, if you will, in the request tracker and nothing happens. They don't get any response back, they don't see the case move through request tracker, they don't get any information on it and they get frustrated. Because when they complain to me, the first thing I say to them is, have you put it in request tracker? And then eighty-five percent of them say, yes, we did and we have received or we've heard nothing.
Yeah, and to speak for code, they're the best at it in the entire city. So this is other departments that were.
Tell me about that, Chase.
Well, I mean, in public works, if there's a backlog of easements that people want these easements to be cut, there's over a hundred twenty of them. We can't cut those easements.
Is that, is that putting a request tracker as well as what you're saying?
Yes, sir, everything is, so I mean, those are gonna be open cases, we're not gonna be able to touch those. If there's something, uh, there's a lot of issues that we don't have the resources to take care of, so those are still gonna be open cases, uh. No, but, yeah, we can do a better job of cleaning those up. Yes, and we'll, we'll, we'll do that.
Can, can you make sure that if someone puts something in, that they get a response back? Even if it's, even if it's, hey, we don't have the resources?
Correct.
Or?
And I, and I've spoken to.
We're working on that?
Last couple of months about doing so, making sure those notifications are going out, not being kept in-house. So, yes, sir, I'll follow back up.
Okay, appreciate it.
And saying that, though, it's sometimes they're assigned to the wrong department also. Or they're designed to, assigned to something that's like animal control.
Who assigns?
I don't even know if it even goes to animal control.
Who assigns it? Who assigns what department?
Whoever created it, whoever put it in.
Oh, whoever, okay, so, so the customer does that?
Request tracker has a bunch of categories.
Right.
Each category is assigned to certain department.
Okay.
So if it's a cate- a category like, you know, drainage, then those go to the public works, uh, request tracker group and those, those staff members are gonna know about it.
Okay, so, so Chase, in, in request tracker, what, could you let us know at the next council meeting, what is the average time that the job is done within each department?
It tracks that, it tracks the amount of hours it takes to.
Right, just, just so we can get a, a, an average.
Sure.
So we can see what department is high performing, what department need a little help and as far as, cause in housing, I, we had lease-up days and we would get an average of, when I was over, uh, housing, I had to work for my maintenance guys.
Yes, ma'am.
And what made us award-winning was when those days were short.
Right.
When they turn them over in three days, two days. And so that would give the council some guidance to see just how long the average, and what the weaknesses are, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, no, and speaking of drainage, most of those drainage requests are still open, cause, I mean, Mr. Joe does a great job and he, and he's one of our best employees we have, but he can't dig out all these ditches. And they're still open, they're open cases.
But, but we got more people coming. We have more people that may be coming, so I like to give people hope. And if we can give them hope to say, after October one, this is what we're gonna do, we're gonna, you know, I'm just, because I've heard those, that too. And it'd be nice to know if we could see somewhere where our block spots are. As far as the, uh, the, the average daily that it takes to get the job done.
The ones that I have open, that have been open the longest are the ones on the chicken.
Okay.
And we're waiting on the court date, but that was updated in there for each of those people.
Yeah.
That made those complaints, that we are waiting on the court date.
Yeah.
And as soon as we get it, it's like tonight, I think it was, there was a date, that's an arraignment date, that's not the actual trial date.
Okay.
So, but.
That's good, that, that's good clarification, though, Chase, that, that a lot of the backlog is coming from other departments because it's, you know, you would assume that it's, it's code enforcement.
At my, at one, there's only been one time I knew that the person's email wasn't wrong and I believe Kyle actually helped the citizen get his email right so that he could get the request trackers.
Right.
But it was showing that we were replying, it was his email that was wrong.
Okay.
Now, the goodness of the city's heart, Kyle went over there and helped him with it, so.
Very good, very good.
I have a question, that's a couple of questions, please.
Go ahead, Jeff.
The, uh, request tracker, there's not any, any report to the council person by district?
You know, in, in other words, he's asking.
Is there a way to break it down?
If it's reported by District A, would Kim get an notification?
She can, I sometimes, um, CC, um, council will call on some, some cases.
Um, Council McCollum on some, some cases.
You do that yourself.
But I had her email in there to the reply.
Or generic categories. So, you know, like you said, it might be down on the street. You know, and, and they just.
Well, I would.
Under that, it doesn't, it doesn't specifically set, you know, break it out into the districts. It's all part of it.
Well, Chase, if you could just ask your department, whoever is responsible for at the department level. If they would be so kind, if it's at least a district B, CC me like you're doing with, like Kathleen is doing with, uh.
See Kathleen.
But Kyle. But we don't want to add to her because the technology can do it itself.
Yeah, we need to look into it.
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
We can look into the technology.
But he, but if you, if you want to be CC'd on yours, on my cases, in my districts, I'll be happy to add your email. But you might get 10 high grass weeds. You, is that what you want to know? Or do you want me to set a priority level for what, what you're CCing?
I, I personally want to know because, uh, this is a partnership of my mind. I know people there, right? If I talk to them and say, hey, what can I do? There are other issues with our older populations or special needs that just physically prohibits them. And so I'll get out there and I'll cut the grass myself. You know, done that in the past. I didn't do that. And, uh, so I just need to know about, about the situation on that side. And, um, as far as zero tolerance, I share Casey's viewpoint. I need to know more about it. I don't know what zero tolerance means. I know it in, in a criminal, uh, police side, but in this, uh, I don't understand it. That's all.
Let me say this on that technology, but fast, if you can ask the developer, whoever developed our website, what's, what, if normally you, they could add that. You can suggest to add something like that because if it, if it's just a notification. Because I don't, I, I believe working hard, but I believe working smart. And I don't want to put more things on our, on the staff that's already strained. So we, because she'll do it and I, no, if the software can do it, that'd be great.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else, guys?
I don't mind the more informed you are, the better it is.
Kathleen, I know I asked some tough questions. I know some, I asked some pinpoint questions, but let me say. I hear a lot of good stuff from your department. I get a lot of good compliments via email. And I make, I try to make sure I run down there and tell, uh, Mr. Phillips, I got one on him while you were on leave. So you guys do do a good job. So don't think I'm, I think you're doing a bad job. Um, I think you're doing a great job. So.
We're here to serve the citizens. That's what we're doing.
I appreciate you being honest and candid with your answers. Thank you.
Very good. Chase, do you think that you have enough information to direct, uh, Kathleen moving forward?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Michael, you want to, you want to move past? Uh, discussion or are you, do you want to see what, what Chase is going to do?
I, I'd like to see what Mr. Kerry is going to do. Um, I'm good right now. Um, I think we beat the horse dead. So I'd like to see which direction it goes.
I think, I think Casey likes dead horses. She's up there smiling. I'm pleasing.
Please don't put that on the record.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Very good. Thank you, Kathleen. All right, guys. Item seven, uh, wait a minute. We're getting into the wacky season now. Item eight D has been pulled, uh, because we did not move. Uh, on those, uh, 14 replacement vehicles. Chevrolet, uh, has closed down ordering. Chevrolet GMC or whoever we were ordering from. Uh, have closed down ordering. So we're going to have to, uh, go without those 14 vehicles. Uh, until next year. We'll, apparently we'll keep those that we have.
Correct.
Uh, and, and I think we'll be okay, but, but we just, uh.
And Mr. Minarjack, because I was going to bring this up. Uh, these vehicles, and I'll pass this on to Chase and Suzie. My, my objection is, is this is this enterprise, this old contract, I'll say it again. But cities in Texas, and I looked at Lake City, I looked at others, they're receiving rebates on vehicles. New purchases, if we go hybrid, if we go electric, the feds as well too. There are monies that will reimburse the cities up to $5,000 on purchases of vehicles. And, uh, the council member, yes, he mentioned it. I've mentioned it before. We have to also work hand in hand with Houston Galveston area council of government. Who provides the resources that they have, the information there as well too. So. There, there's more information there.
Sure. What I would advise you guys to do is set up a meeting with Chase and Suzie. Uh, so that y'all can have more time to, to have this discussion. I'm sure that they'd be willing to hear what you all have to say and certainly we might be able to make some progress. So we'll move past item seven D, eight D, excuse me. We did the rest of this, ladies and gentlemen, should go very, very fast. Let's hope and pray that it does. Items, item eight E. Discussion possible action regarding adopting a resolution supporting the Emancipation National Historic Trail. And requesting a stop in Lamarck, Texas as requested by the Lamarck Economic Development Corporation. Mr. Gaddy, you have waited so patiently and you have not moved, looking at your picture.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I, uh, I'll give a brief rundown and if you have any questions, I'll, I'll try my best to answer if, if that's your pleasure.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, so just a, just a quick brief synopsis of what this is. Uh, this legislation was introduced. In a bill by Senator Cornyn in the Senate and by represent, Representative Jackson Lee in the House. Uh, the emancipation, this is from the National Park Service. The Emancipation, uh, National Historic Trail feasibility study was directed. And approved by Congress on January 27th, 2020 through an amendment to the National Trail System Act. Um, and where they are now is they are essentially, uh, starting to study whether or not this is feasible. They look at the, the suitability and the desirability, uh, with designating a route. As a national historic trail. Uh, so at the July 20th, 21 EDC board meeting. Uh, the EDC board unanimously voted to request that council consider a resolution. Supporting the emancipation, the Emancipation National Historic Trail that is currently being studied. By the National Park Service and requesting a stop in Lamarck. Uh, the belief is, uh, is that a stop in Lamarck could be a long-term benefit to the city of Lamarck. There's no guarantee at this point that it will be designated as such. Um, I called Lilis Urban today, who was the project manager, uh, and found out that. Uh, she is no longer the manager and I got the new, uh, team lead Jill Jensen. And left her a voicemail. My, my goal was with that call was to find out if they had. Set any virtual public meetings yet for public involvement, which is part of the process. And so, um, I'll get that information to Chase once I get it. But they have had a little change, uh, in, in staffing on this project. Any questions from council?
I couldn't be any more supportive of this. I'm so excited about this.
I, I have a question. Where's this trail from?
Sure. Great question. It's, uh, about a 51 mile trail. Uh, the route from the former Osterman Building in Reedy Chapel in Galveston. To Freedmanstown and Emancipation Park in Houston. Uh, they're looking at several different routes. I think the preferred route may be along Highway three for the most part now. So it would make sense if they actually do have a trail. It'd be great if we had a stop. It would help in, in different ways, uh, with our downtown project, et cetera.
Does the city currently own property along Highway three?
Uh, yes, but very little.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, guys. I'll entertain a motion.
I, I move that we approve this.
Any other discussion? Hearing now, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Right.
Any opposed? Items eight F. Discussion possible action. Regarding authorizing the interim city manager to execute a contract with the Galveston County Commissioners Court. To provide fire protection services to unincorporated areas of Galveston County. Commencing September 14th, 2021 and running through September 30th, 2022. In return for a payment in the amount of $22,500. Chief Merriman.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This is, um. This is our, uh, the Galveston County Firefighters Association contract that gets signed every year. Um, the money is provided for us to provide, um, mutual aid services to the unincorporated areas of Galveston County. That border our jurisdiction.
Very good. This is something that, uh, that, uh, we approve every year. Is that right, Chief?
Yes, sir.
And those monies are used for?
Uh, we use those, we use it, we're, we're required to use those monies for, um, uh. Equipment, small tools, um, capital purchases, bunker gear, um, things that are needed, um, for the. For the performance of our duties.
Very good. Um, it's common for, uh, public safety entities to engage in, um, mutual aid agreements. Uh, we have one with Texas City and, and Hitchcock and, and I'm sure Galveston. Dickinson, uh, and they all have one with us as well. In fact, uh, we use Texas City for mutual aid quite often. Uh, and they use us less often, but they do use us. And so this is just, uh, an extension of that. Uh, that we might be able to help some of those unincorporated areas of the county. Uh, that don't have any fire protection, uh, those that are nearest to us. Uh, as Dickinson and, uh, and Santa Fe and the like. Uh, they, uh, protect those that are nearest to them. And so I, I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing now, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Right.
Any opposed? Item eight G, uh. Council, we can, we can discuss this. Uh, we don't have to discuss it long, but it, it eight G is discussion possible action concerning returning to two. Council meetings per month. Here's the reasoning, uh, and it is perhaps, uh. A reminder, uh, for us as council. Since this summer. And perhaps even the spring, our meetings have ran an average of about three and a half to four hours long. Um, that can be exhausting, uh, not only the council. Uh, and, and in particular, uh, I don't know that we have, we thoroughly, uh, discuss all of the topics on our agenda, even in this timeframe. Uh, but also that can be exhausting to the community. To those members that are sitting in the audience here, they're going home at 10 o'clock tonight like we are. Uh, and those members that are watching via YouTube and, and other, other, uh, uh, avenues. Um, these long meetings can be very exhausting. This council is a council that discusses. More issues than any other council that we've had. And we discuss them thoroughly. And we go back and forth with one another and we go back and forth with the, with the, uh, with members of the community, whether it be. Again electronically or in person. And so that's where this is coming from. I don't know that we have enough time to really do the work that we intend to do. Uh, and do it in a, in a respectful, uh, and, and, and efficient manner. Food for thought. Uh, I'd love to hear you all's thoughts. That wouldn't hurt my feelings either way. Uh, but if we choose to remain with one meeting, we have to find a way to become more efficient. Because we are exhausting our public with one meeting lasting five, seven, 10, 12 hours. So, having said that, does anybody want to weigh in on that issue? Go ahead, Casey. I'm sorry, Michael.
Go ahead, Casey.
Did I look like I was that ready to make a comment? I really appreciate the, um, obvious intent behind this and the. Critical thinking that's gone into it because I completely agree. I really like that. I think that there's to be expected a period of time when there's this much turnover on a council. And during a time when a lot is happening. And we have long meetings because we're learning a lot. We're learning each other. Some people are learning just basic things. But at the same time, yes, we have to get better and have shorter meetings because it's all boils down to a matter of. Bandwidth for staff, bandwidth for us, bandwidth for the community. That said, I'm not. In big, I'm not in favor of two council meetings a month. Strictly because I think it limits our inclusivity and our accessibility as a council. I think that, you know, these are volunteer positions, uh, apart from $50 a month. And if we want to be a council setting a precedent for future peo- people who might consider running for council moving forward. Right now, because it is a volunteer position, that sort of precludes that. Or you know, that, that, that is under the assumption that you can work this job and have a job. If we start moving to designated two meetings a month. Unless we put a time limit on them. Which I don't even know if we can do. I, I worry that what it does is it then limits our pool of people who will say, yes, I have time. To consider running, to be an elected official. Yes, I have time to be a part of this, this type of government. Uh, I will say something has to be done because I am a person myself going, wow. I need more time and bandwidth to, to, to work efficiently in this type of government. But that's all I'll say tonight. I think we should talk about it more, but.
Thank you for that, Casey.
Yeah, thank you, Keith.
I hate to say it, but I think we do need two meetings a month. Reason being, we are very, as it's been said, we are a very inquisitive council. We like to ask questions, but we also. Expect a lot of, from our staff. And if we, I mean, we make 8,000 changes in one meeting, it doesn't give the staff a chance to react. And I would rather see a finished product on the second meeting. Versus, oh, well, let's make a motion and then, but these changes. That's just my two cents. Now, do I want to come here twice? I'm here for the people. So, but I want to make sure we do the best job we can for them. So that's, that's my two cents. I, I, unless we become less inquisitive, I think. Two meetings is what we'll need to benefit everybody.
Thank you for that, Michael.
You don't know. Ever since I got elected, we've had two meetings. I don't know.
You don't know any other different.
I'm, I'm just afraid that, uh, both meetings will be long. So I don't, I don't know. I, I think we do need to, to concentrate on time and, uh, to be in, you know, efficiency. But I, I agree with, with Casey. I'd rather be here for four hours and be here for four hours, one meeting and then another meeting, another two or three hours. But I would be honest with you, I would like to hear from the staff to see what is more conducive for them.
That's a good point. Very good point. What you got, Joe?
If, uh, one thing I've noticed about, uh. How we conduct our meeting is we're opening the doors, not so much for us. Which we are inquisitive. I am, I know. But to our residents.
Yeah.
And that's, that's different than, than before. I think David, you could attest to that is that as we take up agenda items. We also open the door, uh, to comments that you guys have to share with us on topics. And, uh, I think that's important, that, that's, uh, important. So. Having said that, I, I mean, I don't object to two meetings. We are having, as Kim said, we are having them up. My life has grown used to that. And so, uh, but I'll go with whatever, whatever the consensus is.
Kim, you brought up a great point. And, and it is that we have not allowed the staff to weigh in. That, that's an excellent point. Uh, because we don't know if it is easier for them to have one meeting or two. And so I would say, because of that, I would say, let's, uh. Let's give Chase a chance to poll the staff, the directors, to see what they think and how they feel. And then Chase, you, you might between now and, and the next meeting, because this will be back the next meeting, uh, Kiera. Um, you, you might email the council and. Um, you, you might email the council and let us know what you find.
Yes, sir.
That way we can, we can make a more, uh, intelligent and educated decision. How about that? Is that fair, guys? Good deal, good deal. Item eight H, discussion possible action regarding, uh, adopting resolution number letter R dash two zero two one dash zero zero two two, nominating to appear on the ballot of the Board of Directors of Galveston Central Appraisal District for two-year terms, be- beginning January, uh, first, 2022 through December 31st, 2023. I received word, uh, that, uh, former mayor Matthew Doyle is, um, is wanting to serve on the, uh, the appraisal district. The other thing that I want to share with you is, is for our votes, uh, because all of these, uh, the, the voting process, each entity, whether it be city or county or school district or what have you, we have a certain amount of votes that go with our vote. Uh, in order for us to be impactful and powerful, uh, we usually have to, uh, gain consensus with the city of Texas City, uh, TCISD and the like. We have to kind of gather ourselves together and move forward as one entity in order for us to be effective. Because North County is strong. They're strong and they have a lot of votes. And so we have to band together as, as, as those of us in the southern parts of the county. Uh, Texas City is entertaining Matthew Doyle. Uh, and so I would ask for us, unless we, anybody else has any other names, uh, to entertain Matthew Doyle tonight. Uh, he is from, you know, the mainland. Uh, he's been a mayor in, in our sister city. Uh, and, uh, I think that, uh, he would be an excellent choice for us, uh, to serve on that board. Uh, that would be my nomination. Uh, are there any other nominations?
I, I don't understand that clarified, that, that this is an additional member of this board or what?
Uh, Bruce Clausen, who is the secretary of this board, is either retiring or, uh, not seeking another term.
All right, that's what I.
Right. And, and, and Matthew Doyle, Bruce Clausen, is from Texas City. Uh, he, he was a Texas City Commissioner, and I believe he was a Texas City Emergency Management Coordinator, if I'm, if I'm, if I'm correct.
You're right, yeah.
And so we're replacing one Texas City representative with another, basically. Is there a second to that nomination?
Second.
Any discussion about that nomination? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item nine, appointments.
Oh, Mayor, uh, item eight I was.
Eight I.
Was the disaster.
Look at, look at Gus slipping eight I in on us. And I say we'll be done, I'm just teasing. Eight I, this is an addendum to our, uh, agenda. It was posted, uh, and, and a reasonable time according to law. But because I declared a, uh, an emergency on last Monday, the council then has to come behind me and ratify it. So this is what this is about. Discussion possible action regarding ratifying a declaration of disaster for the city of Lamarck, Texas, including adopting an emergency ordinance prepared by, uh, interim city attorney. Uh, and this ordinance would be letter O dash two zero two one dash zero zero one eight.
And this ordinance, as the mayor said, is merely ratifying his disaster declaration. Um, it has to be done within seven days. It's being done, it, it's in effect until the mayor terminates the disaster declaration or the city council does. It's being, it was done to allow for both preparation for the storm and immediate cleanup and allows us to continue to take advantage. Um, as we, as the city continues to clean up any, um, potential federal funds, uh, federal dollars. Um, so that's just what this ordinance does. Um, and as far as termination, timing wise, you know, I'll talk to Chase, but probably the October meeting, things will terminate.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Yeah.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Only discussion I have is, have we, as the state and federals, have the feds declared a state of emergency too, or just, just us?
I think, I think Joe Biden did, the, the president did, but I don't think our governor did.
No.
Okay, so the federal government.
There's no been, there's no federal declaration for Nicholas.
Ah, you're right, that's for, that's for, um, the border. I'm sorry, you're right. I stand corrected.
Okay.
Right.
There is a, there is a request by TIDAM to go ahead and to sell out your, your disaster information if you had damages. And that will go to, uh, calculating the limits that are necessary for a federal declaration.
Okay.
So.
Okay, appreciate it. Thanks, sir.
And this is being done just to.
Proact.
So, yeah, pro- pro- being proactive so that we.
Appreciate it. Thanks, sir.
Let, let's be clear, there is no disaster declaration for Hurricane Nicholas, but there is a disaster, uh, uh, declaration for, uh, the migrants at the border. And I'm not even being political. I'm just trying to clarify what I just said. That's all I'm trying to do. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now we are, uh, up to nine A appointments. Council, do you have any appointments you'd like to make at this time?
None here, sir. Thank you.
Casey? No appointments, okay. We don't have executive session. Thanks be to God. And now we're at 11. Requests and announcements from council. Who wants to go first?
I'll go first. Um, I just want to congratulate Ms. Colleen Martin for her, uh, winning of the Young Professional Award at the, was it Women in Leadership Conference or Women in Leadership Awards? And it was really lovely to see this, the thread of emails from so many different city staff extending their heartfelt congratulations to Colleen. It is obvious that she is beloved by many and it is for obvious reasons because she's such a great person and so superlative at her job. We are lucky to have her. So, uh, congrats to Colleen. Um, and also, I think I'm getting this data right, so please fact check me, staff, but tomorrow is the ribbon cutting for Jimmy Haley Elementary?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm really excited about that. I can't wait to be there and see that happen. This is an exciting moment. So thank you to everyone who, I mean, there's so many people I can't even imagine who have been a part of that whole process and making it happen. But I'm looking forward to being there and basking in its glow. So, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Michael?
Uh, I'd like to thank, um, all the city staff that worked hard over, uh, the hurricane. Um, Public Works especially, I mean, they, uh, every storm, they work hard. So I appreciate them. Uh, congratulations to Colleen. Thank everybody, even the, uh, who came out on September 11th, Patriots Day. I hope to see more, more Patriots come out next year. But the city staff that volunteered their time, I appreciate that. Um, they didn't have to, but I appreciate that. So, and I will be there tomorrow for the ribbon cutting, so I'm looking forward to that. That's all I have, sir.
Good deal. Ms. Jansen?
Okay, uh, Haley Elementary is a beautiful school, so make sure you go see it tomorrow. When I went to see it, Mayor, two weeks ago, I was, I just got teary eyed because it's absolutely phenomenal. This is what we wanted.
Didn't you?
I did. It was act, it was that gorgeous. I did. I had like a teacher itch, right? But it was, I mean, it's so phenomenal though to see a building that's so conducive for kids and you can look right in and see them. So thanks for that gentle reminder, Casey, about Haley. I'm excited about October because October 5th is National Night Out. We've got some great things coming, uh, from our city, uh, our citizens, our planning activities, and I love to see citizens come together and say, hey, you want to do this? And shout out to Pat and her team that's working on that. So get ready for an amazing October 5th. And then of course you have Bayou Fest October 16th. These are things that we as a community can come together and have common ground. Celebrate one another, love on each other, loving Lamarck. I did go to the football game against Lamarck versus Hitchcock. That was great. I passed out things with, uh, our city logo and that, and the fans loved it, the people loved it. Seeing us out there and those type of things. Uh, we are a community that is striving for perfection. And I believe if we strive for perfection, we will catch excellence. If you strive for perfection, you'll catch excellence. Shout out to the man of District A, Richard Loftus, who took care of the citizens and shout out to the mayor and Chase, who while I was out of town, they were working every day communicating with me, letting me know what was happening, uh, to some of our elderly during the storm. And it, I, last week showed me just how much it means to be a part of a community. I grew up in Clear Lake where everyone was so mobile and a lot of my neighbors never talked to me. So I did not want to grow up in a community where I didn't know my neighbors. And so many made like, how could you live next to people? But that felt like it was very different. Most people, they were astronauts, engineers. Um, it, it just wasn't a sense of community because people tend to move away every six years. But here, there's such a sense of community. People know each other, they love each other. And I don't think that you guys really know how special that is to have people that you know and that you love and who, who, uh, check on one another. So that meant so much to me. So thank you so much, Mayor and Chase and Richard. And I hate to keep, uh, calling names. I know I'm probably forgetting someone, but just that was, that looked so good on everybody working together and I hope that we can keep that. Um, and just get ready for an amazing October. So we're gonna have fun.
Yes, ma'am.
First, uh, thank you to, to the residents of, uh, of District B that had, uh, were patient with me. Uh, we were able to get through the electricity going out. Uh, Ms. Couch on Duro, uh, Mr. Lane, Johnny Moses, all of you. Thank you, Chase, for providing me that contact with Texas, New Mexico. They did say that we're not going to get electricity until Sunday. We're able to facilitate that and they got it back Friday morning. So that was important, uh, for individuals. Uh, the, uh, I, I thank Public Works employees that showed up and volunteered their time for the distribution of food boxes that we had here on Saturday with the Salvation Army. I'm grateful to Salvation Army for their willingness to work with Lamarck and to distribute those boxes, which were important for many individuals whose food had gone bad uh, while the, uh, electricity was out. So once again, thank you to those, the Public Works people were especially enthusiastic. Mayor, for you out there too, and, um, and, um, on, on that particular event. And so, uh, and I'm willing, I'll be out there too at the, uh, opening for the, uh, new Haley School at six, 6:00 PM tomorrow. It will be here. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Uh, again, I was excited to, uh, be with, uh, uh, our city staff, uh, uh, with, with my friend Chase over here, and I believe Anisha was at our table. Uh, and, and, and so many others as we celebrated Colleen's, uh, uh, award. She is definitely deserving of this award and I wish her all the best. And certainly we know she's going to continue to do, uh, great things for Lamarck. Uh, I wanted to say thank you to, uh, Galveston County Connects again for the September 11th event, the cleanup. Uh, it allowed us to serve our community in a very different way and, and I'm grateful for the opportunity. You don't know, uh, the feeling of community until you go out and pick up other people's trash. And you start picking up other people's trash, you know, you are, you are surely in the middle of a community. And so I'm, 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 I'm grateful for that experience. And to get, anytime I get a chance to spend time with my buddy, Michael Carlson, it, it's a good day. It's a good day. Uh, I want to say congratulations to Sarah Giles' family, to the Sarah Giles' family. Uh, we have a new name for our new middle school and it will be Giles Middle School. Uh, Ms. Giles was a teacher, tutor, uh, and an all-around servant of the young people in our community. So she is so deserving. Uh, I'd like to thank Mayor Protem Compeon and the Salvation Army for providing, Joe, how many meals, how many meal boxes was it?
Two hundred boxes.
Three hundred meal boxes we were able to distribute, uh, on, on this past Saturday. Uh, and Joe and I were there asking our neighbors, how did you make it through the storm? Are you okay? Do you need anything? And that, they seemed to be, uh, very appreciative of the act of kindness of just giving food to those that, that don't have it. But Chase, I want to say this. Uh, the Public Works Department is amazing. They are amazing, hands down. For two straight Saturdays, Chase, those folks came out and volunteered their time. They didn't get paid for anything. They volunteered their time to help the, this entire council pick up trash. They volunteered their time to help Joe, uh, and the rest of the team, uh, to deliver food boxes to the point that Joe and I didn't have anything to do other than greet the, greet the, the people that, that came up to make sure that they were doing okay, to hear their stories about the storm. Uh, that's an amazing group of people. Uh, and, and again, I just can't say enough about our Public Works Division. That, that, that's an awesome group of people. Um, we made it through Nicholas. We've had our share of devastation as it relates to hurricanes, uh, and this, uh, thanks be to God, was not one of those days. Um, many of us came out all right. Most of us, uh, had power outages, uh, and that can be frustrating. But we survived, uh, and we survived with minimal damage to our homes, and that's a blessing. Uh, there are some of our, our, the people in our community that are still struggling, they're still suffering. And I encourage us as a, as a community to continue to engage those persons. Uh, I, even though their, their lives have been restored, there's still a lot of work to be done. Uh, there are still a lot of people, uh, that need assistance. And so as a community, we need to go beyond just today and last week, and we need to continue to press forward with the, and with the attitude of forward together. We make this city better as we move forward together. We make this city the city we want her to be as we move forward together. We won't always agree on everything, but certainly if we can agree that we all want better for ourselves, then that's a good starting point. And so I encourage us to continue to work together, to continue to work together under the mantra of forward together. And I know that if we continue to do that, great things will happen. Lastly, certainly not least, uh, this morning, as I was watching, uh, the news, I saw that there was another police officer in the city of Houston that was killed in the line of duty. And our hearts and our prayers go out to that family. But also I want us to remember, if we don't support our police department, not only with, with kind words and presence, but if we don't support our police department with the provisions they need. They need more help. They need more officers. They need better training. They need better equipment. They need better facilities. They need more encouragement from our community. I, I just don't know how else I need to say this to us. Uh, we need to continue to support our police department because at any given moment, they might be called to sacrifice their lives. And I've been a firefighter and I know what that's like, and Carlson, you know what that's like as well. But most of you that have never had an opportunity to step forward and sacrifice your life for the life of somebody else, the best thing that we can do is support our police department in a way that they feel it and in a way that they can see it. Put our money where our mouth is and put our hearts on the line to let them know that we are proud of them and that we value them and that we are excited about not only what they can do, but what they will do for our city in the future. Now, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Chase, there are a couple of things that you wanted to share with us.
Yes, sir. I just wanted to go over a couple of the hot topic issues that, uh, I've been getting emails and, and calls from different citizens over the last couple of months. You know, a couple of months ago, when all of You know, a couple of months ago, when all of this turnover happened, there was a water bill discrepancy found by the Belle Paris audit. I just wanted to go over, this is going to be a time-consuming process, but our U P staff is going to have to go over each account one by one. That's going to take, I mean, it could take six months. I'm not going to say it's going to take that long, but it could. They have to go over each account. It's a case-by-case scenario to see how much they were charged, how much it was, you know, the, the usage was. Those re- reimbursements will be delivered. And the, and the citizens will be notified whenever uh Mrs. Lee's staff is able to do that. So we are, she has began that process and that's what we're going over now. The uh, the next hot topic issue is, you know, due to all the discussions over the last three, two, three months about, you know, with our extensive turnover and staff. You know, I've instructed Mill Shirley to conduct the managerial audit on the operations within the city of Lamarck, which goes for all of us, basically. Whatever they may find, it'll be reported by Mill Shirley to this council, and that goes for me, my department, everyone. And uh, you know, uh, Gus is, has access to all of the direct, all the staff, all our paperwork, everything. So I want him to dig in and give you all a report. So there's nothing, there's, there's nothing to hide on my end, Kira's and Kyle's and Noah's. And Gus is going to dig into it and report back to you. And that's it.
Very good, Chase, that was a lot, that was a lot. So let's get this straight, we're gonna, we're gonna reconcile water bills as we find them, we have to go account by account. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just so that the public would know, we're working on it, we're going account by account to resolve water bills and uh, and the other, the other uh announcement that the interim city manager made speaks for itself. Uh, and so, so, so we're looking at what we have been doing uh as, as a, as a, as a municipality. Uh, and, and, and there will be results to that. Uh, and, and, and those results will be shared with council and council would, I assume, would have the opportunity to ask questions.
Great. Absolute.
Okay. Would we have opportunity to ask questions of department directors?
Um, that, that would be in Chase's discretion.
Okay.
If that's what this council likes, yes, sir.
Okay, all right, good deal, all right. There's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I have one alibi, sir.
You have one alibi?
One alibi. I forgot to thank Chase and Kyle for mentoring the E O C during the hurricane.
Yes, 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 yes.
I was looking right at Kyle and totally forgot to mention him.
You know, you, you're, you're right, and, and, you know, I'm sure Kyle did too, but I, I know for a fact, uh, because, you know, I speak to Chase uh on a regular basis. You know, Chase had a lot going on with his family, but he had to, I think he stayed all night that night. And I know, I know you did too, Kyle, but I think Chase has a smaller, a smaller child than you, so, so he gets more credit. I'm just teasing, I'm teasing. God bless both of you guys for, for your service to our community.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? We stand adjourned.